Development first in old business so that we can hear from Wendy. Prior to going through the other section captain reports. All in favor?
Hi Kirk Scott, yes.
Michelle Williams and I said, Gordon say aye, Norm you good with that?
Yep.
Great, looks like we have a unanimous vote to reorder that section of old business. Thank you. Public delegations is next, so this is a time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, rather. Items referrals or applications subject to a decision by the commission, a public hearing or in litigation may not be discussed. During delegations, the members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comments. Do we have anyone from the public tonight who would like to speak in public delegations? Doug?
I would like, yeah, I'd like to say, I would just ask, I didn't see the minutes of the last meeting posted. So if they're available, I'd love to see them. And if there are any drafts of any documents that are now available, even in preliminary form, I'd love to be able to take a look at those. That's it.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sure the minutes are being filed, so we only, we're on a kind of a tight meeting schedule.
Madam Chair, I guess just to address Mr. Dubisky's, we could certainly share the documents with him. I guess the question, what's the easiest way to do that? Would that be to share through Google Docs and share him the link by email or?
We can download and send out, I think.
The hard copies, all the hard copies, as it, okay.
Yep. And you'll see some of them tonight as well as we go through. Okay. We do not have any new business today, so jumping into old business. Trying to decline it, it's Rosemary, is she in the waiting room?
There we go, just saw she, she just popped in.
Hello.
What's up? Good to see you. To catch you up, we are under the old business section and we moved to begin with economic development so that we could hear from Wendy Bury, who's with us from the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition. Did I get that right Wendy?
Yes.
Awesome, and she has some thoughts for us for, as a stakeholder group for the economic development section. So Wendy, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. I just want to check in real quick to see how many of you even know what the cultural coalition is or does for the region? If you know of us, can you put your hand up so I can see? If you don't, great, okay, so half. So just briefly then, we are this region's, for lack of a better word, your arts council. We serve as one of nine of the regional designated regional service organizations to support the Office of the Arts and the Department of Economic and Community Development. So we primarily serve New London County. We serve over 500 partners in this region from every museum to performing arts center, historical society, library, artists, galleries, you name it, they're all part of the coalition. And we do everything from advocacy, as Doug knows, to, to programs and services to help make sure that the businesses are healthy. And so we act like a chamber for the arts organizations essentially. So that's what we do. We just adopted a strategic plan for the next five years ironically in February. So it got a little bit blown up for the next five years. But one of those, most of the core pillars will remain the same. One of them actually is that we actually see arts and culture integrated into every P O C D in this region. So this is a great way for us to kick off that work. We've already helped with about four or five other towns in terms of providing some guidance around integrating arts and culture into P O C Ds and certainly some more heavy lifting on economic development. So I don't know where you are in terms of your update. I've read through your previous plan. I don't know how far along you are in your update, but I'm just going to do a quick PowerPoint to just show you some of the ways and some of the things out there so that you can, and I just need some feedback because if there ain't anything that you see that's like, yes, we'd love that in our P O C D, we can help you develop that a little bit further. So I just wanted to kind of get a kind of a gauge of where you all are on like absolutely not, hell no, that's never going to happen in our town to that sounds great, let's do that one. So I will offer you a little bit of a, so I think I can share my screen fine. Thank you. Get it up and running. To go back out to get back to you to share my screen first, otherwise it won't let you see it. Great. Tell me when you can, want to make sure you can see that? Good?
Looks great.
Great, okay. All right, so what I wanted to do is actually just start off with, I believe Gary and I spoke previously, you are a town that is participating in sustainable C T. And so as part of that, there are some basic items in terms of what you can do to make both integrate arts and culture into your P O C D and get some action items and some points for sustainable C T. So briefly, some of the, these are kind of all of them in action item three. The biggest one is the mapping of your tourism and cultural assets. Do you actually have a map of them? Do you know who's there? Do you have an inventory? Do you have them categorized? Have you mapped out where they are physically? And do you understand in terms of cultivating what's missing, what you have a lot of? And where there is some growth opportunities around tourism and cultural assets? So mapping them is just a basic thing to do. You can ask questions along the way, Michelle, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Have to live on the official municipal site? We do have partner groups like Discovery Slime who have that mapped. Is that an adequate partnership or should it be duplicated also on the municipal side?
Usually it's in partnership with, or you don't want to duplicate anything, but if it's in partnership with it, it just has to have a purpose. So the idea behind mapping it is what are you going to do with that map? If it's just to have it, that's one thing. But if you really think about how you can utilize it in terms of who, where the businesses are, what are the hindrances to them? Where do you have opportunities? Where is there signage needed? Where could you spruce up the areas, things like that? So it's about purpose and intentional usage of those assets.
Okay, great.
You can include in your, your P O C D that you actually want to utilize your mapping and maybe think more broadly about what that asset map looks like, really thinking about those cultural resources, parks, beaches, but also really thinking about spaces where arts can take place, festivals, events, public activities, so.
Okay.
So that's kind of just an easy, you know, get some, I think you get 10 points to that Gary, I believe it's 10 or five on that one. The next one is really about supporting the arts and creative culture in the existing community. And those are things that you can do, and these are really meant to be, as you know, with sustainable C T, really making things permanent, right? Not just kind of ad hoc and one offs, but really thinking about how you can support a culture of creativity in your community. And those are things like establishing a town poet laureate. So New London is the only town in this region that has a poet laureate. They're on their third right now. And Norwich has adopted one, the first attempt at their poet laureate had some, some slight trips. And so we're working on getting them their first poet laureate. And there is a statewide, there's probably, I think 40, a town poet laureates in the state and there's a state poet laureate. So it's an easy thing to do. You have a poet laureate that attends your events and they read a poem at the beginning of it, but there is a town designated person who is always kind of at public events. Other pieces that are just including arts and culture in your marketing materials in terms of those being assets, committing funding in terms of supporting events, activities, festivals that are in your town. These are all sustainable C T things, so these are just right off of their website. Some that are a little bit more difficult to do, obviously establishing a percent for art program. Not, not something we see in Connecticut at all, basically. The state does have a percent for a program, it's actually on moratorium right now, but that's an option. And then getting into having artists and residences and liaisons to your town. These are actually becoming more prominent, just so you know. Artists and residents in departments of transportation, departments of housing, departments of social justice, even in larger cities, we are seeing these artists and residencies taking place and they're really interesting opportunity. So if there's even a glimmer of, of tell me more, we can talk about that. The next one is establishing a cultural district, I'll get to that in a minute. That is not an official sustainable C T action and yet is, it's now in the next round of updates. It'll be there as soon as they update the next one in the coming months. The development of a placemaking plan for just in terms of awareness of what a placemaking plan is, it really is, and this is a good definition of it, it really means that you're giving the arts a seat at your community development table. It means that anytime you're thinking about real estate development or transit opportunities or safety issues, public health crises like the one we're in now, anything else that affects a resident's life, that the arts and the arts organizations or artists are at the table to help you think about solutions and how they can help. And that comes down to things like New London uses artists to market their actual, their new real estate developments. They fill the developments with artwork, they show them as artistic spaces, they actually help sell the buildings. And then once they're ready to actually sell to buyers, they utilize the artists and the arts for anything from renderings to just filling it up with artwork to make it a more attractive place to want to live and they use it to sell the actual properties. They also have artists who help design beautification that may be certain flowers and floral things that the town then adopts as kind of the town, you know, landscaping or the flower that developers would always come in and use as a way of kind of unifying the town. But it takes an artist to kind of come in with a vision for that. Safety issues. Sorry, transit opportunities, this is a lot of towns across the United States and the world do this. They, if they're going to have bicycle racks anyplace or trash cans or anything on the beaches or anything that is utilitarian, they have an artist design it, right? It just makes it more attractive, makes it more interesting, makes it more placemaking based of could it be a shell? Could it be the nautical? Could it be maritime? Could it be something else? But it's the idea that you're going to take anything utilitarian from bus shelter and a streetscape and thinking about how it could look better. And the artists are always involved in that process. On the safety issues, usually we have, we have data that supports this. When you have public art in public spaces, there is less crime that takes place there. So there is a way, and also this comes down to traffic calming, when you have busy intersections, when you want to slow down cars, you put artwork there, it actually slows it down and it can be traffic calming. And so there's just art, you know, artists can be at the table for all of these things. Obviously, the public health crisis where we're seeing artists right now, they're creating all of the artwork around the marketing campaigns around wearing masks and honoring public, honoring your healthcare workers, dealing with some of the social issues right now. All these things, mental health, depression recovery, artists are kind of at the forefront of this work. The next ones, that's the sustainable C T. This is the newest piece to the sustainable C T. This just came, we, this was passed in legislation last year. It became effective at the end of last year and it was just kind of, we were just on the cog agenda for March to present the cultural district opportunity and that kind of got displaced. But anyways, the cultural district is Connecticut, New to Connecticut. It is available to any municipality to do and it basically means you're going to create and form a cultural district in your town. You get to define the actual geographical area. And really the purpose of it is a walkable area, it's a center of cultural activities. It can be large, it can be small. But it's really kind of identifying a district that is unique and that you want to build up. And there's usually a plan that is attached to it. Massachusetts does these, they have cultural districts, about 45 of them. They're funded in Massachusetts, they're not funded here, just so you know. But reasons why you would establish one, it's really to basically market your arts and culture to visitors and residents and businesses. Why would you want to tell them why it's a great place to live, work and play? It's to promote the artists that live there, the businesses, tourism, increased visitation. In Massachusetts, they have the data to show that every cultural district that has been formed has increased their tax base, period. Right, there's data behind it, the visitation, walking traffic, foot traffic, businesses are going to increase your tax base. So think about how cultural district can be one of those tools. There is a partnership with the cultural districts with the state that D E C D, the Office of Tourism and the Office of the Arts will provide kind of in kind opportunities. So C T visit would market all the municipal districts in a unique way at no cost. The Office of the Arts would help to kind of promote them, D E C D would help promote them. We haven't, like I said, we just got this off the ground in February. There were about seven towns lined up waiting to do this and then COVID hit. So we anticipate to see this begin to take off again, especially now given post COVID and that need for economic development in your downtown areas. It's also applicable to rural areas, they just have to have a certain density. They have to be walkable, have to be dense, you know, they have to be enough assets there to turn it into a cultural district. So that's another opportunity, that would be in your P O C D. Other ways to really integrate arts and culture into your P O C D is really just thinking about the utilitarian public works projects. Where can art be included as part of your public works and streetscapes, your transportation hubs, any kind of improvements, beautification projects? Many of you know the Beehive Bridge in New Britain, it just opened last year. It really was a longstanding, you know, public works project that they just needed to get the bridge redone. The bridge itself, actually the highway actually disjointed the two parts of the city and the bridge was often the divider. And so what the Beehive Bridge has done has actually reconnected these two parts of the city. It's a very walkable actual streetscape that they shut down frequently to do parades and festivals and more social gatherings. So it's become kind of the hub for the city that's connecting these two disparate parts. It's also beautifully lit at night, it's an enormous gorgeous piece of artwork. And it's really kind, and it's built on their heritage. The Beehive is about their heritage, it celebrates their place. And it's been a great, it also won a lot of awards. So just an idea in terms of what you can think about in terms of the grand scale. Little smaller ways, right? These are just artwork on the streets, right? How you can make little street corners safer, kind of quieter, more attractive. The one on the right is actually been used, it's actually freaked out a lot of people because it makes people stop their cars immediately because they think it's like 3D. It's actually very effective, which is what they wanted to do. But it does actually, this is where traffic calming, where you just paint it on the road and you don't have to put up a barrier or anything else, they stop. So just creativity. And then an example from Bristol, Rhode Island, they actually contracted with, the municipality has contracted for years with a fabricator, a foundry called the Steel Yard. And the Steel Yard is kind of a creative nonprofit space where artists come in to use welding, manufacturing, really cool steel stuff. And they contracted them, this is three different towns, this is not the same town in Bristol, this is just one example. But really essentially they've contracted them for every utilitarian object. Bike racks, trash cans, signage, lamp posts, you name it, anything metal. They have the artists designing and creating this across the town. And these are three different towns or three different things, but just the idea that when you look at your spaces, how you can integrate arts, and this really needs to be in your P O C D in order to get there. It means that you're going to think about things differently in terms of investment in public works and public projects and streetscapes and public spaces. And the last one here is just other ideas of how artworks are done. You know, there's signage from welcoming people to town, to chairs that are done, to murals and public artwork. Everything from fire hydrants to utility electric boxes can be painted, you know, artists can paint anything. So they can make it prettier. But it really comes down to in your P O C D, where, how deep that foundational level will be in where you're going to have artists and arts organizations at the table. That is the core of really integrating arts and culture means you have artists and arts representatives at your table when you're talking about economic development and businesses growing and public works and transportation and public health. That's kind of the focus that we'd like to see in the P O C D is this commitment to including the arts and culture, businesses, representatives and artists in the town's plans in any way, shape and form. So that's, I'll leave that there, that's my stop share and of the, end of the slideshow. Any, so that's, and that's just a really quick kind of, you know, everything you can think of, right? Did anything appeal to you?
To me, certainly, my mind was just like racing with all, you know, where it was really going for me was municipal waste. Gary and I were talking earlier today about education efforts needed on municipal recycling and how we just cannot get through on what is and is not acceptable in the single stream recycling. And I can think of all these places where there are public receptacles where, you know, a flyer designed by me would not be effective. But even in our parks and recreation spaces when it comes to wait, waste, trash cans, literally. And there are just these white bins on the beach that don't need to be.
Have you, I don't know if you've been to Europe lately, but if you go to some of the awesome, they, their trash cans, they're, they're, and they're three sets, right? So in Europe, you'll see it's the trash, regular trash debris, recyclable, and I forget what the third one is. But they are some of the coolest looking, you can't help but not only look at the receptacles, but then you know exactly which thing goes in which one, right? And so, but they've made them through art's eyes to make them both noticeable so that you know that your trash needs to go there, recyclable, meaning they need to be separated out. But also just, you know, they, they, they add to the environment, they're beautiful to look at, right? They're not eyesores.
I think the third might be compost.
Yes.
If that would, okay, oh, in the city environments, I'll have to think about that, it could be, it could be, yeah.
That would be a costly removal, like.
And I think it's metal, I want to say it's either metal or like cans, like cans and bottles and then like paper, plastic and then something else. But anyways, but yes, yes, things like that, utilitarian items like that where you can, and think you, in terms of the, you know, thinking about not just beautifying the town, you're employing artists, right? This is where we kind of get into, you're employing the businesses, you're employing artists, you're, you're supporting a sector and you're supporting an industry, which by the way is really crippled right now. So long term, we need every town to be thinking about how you're going to maintain that industry in your town after COVID.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
Which.
Things that I liked, oh, you want to go Gary?
Well, I was, yeah, you go ahead, I'll wait.
Hi Kirk Scott, I like a couple of the things and looking, looking at the transportation section and then hearing your, your brief there, maybe, maybe wish I heard that, like, I don't know, it was two months ago. Because there was a lot of really neat ideas with the streetscapes, traffic calming. And also when you talk about the artwork, there was a picture in the, in the, in the transportation section that I didn't quite understand why artwork would be in the transportation section. So my comment was to take it out. But at that, when, 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 when I made that recommendation, I didn't really understand why you would have it there. Now I get that, now I understand what art can do for streetscapes and traffic calming. So that, that I thought was really interesting.
Well, and Kirk, you, you only saw one or two, like give me 10 minutes on transportation and artwork and I can give you a whole show across the nation and the world.
No, that's really great. And to echo what Michelle said, you know, there are so many things that you just said that are, you know, you got, you sparked like three different thoughts about ways to do things in town, like the municipal projects, the garbage cans, I love that, ways to decorate, like main thoroughfares and maybe like the beach having like signage at the beach. And then we also talked about in the transportation section, more signage for bicycles. It would be neat to have some bike signs that, that are artistically, I want to say individual to East Lime, you know, with like a seashell on it, you know? I could see a lot of, a lot of places where artwork could, could be used, so.
One of the, the creative placemaking planning, that process that you would include in your P O C D takes a lot of time. And creative placemaking planning is around involving your community members in charrettes, discussions, surveys, you know, to really help understand what is it that unites your town and what is your history heritage theme? What do you want to say about what your town is? So whether it be nautical, whether it be the Rose City of Norwich, whether it be the sunflowers of Griswold. Every town needs to have a conversation to help get consensus around what is our identity? And what do we want to say to the outside world is who we are here? And how can we make that consistent across everything we do? So in New Britain, you're seeing a really huge push right now around the Beehive theme, right? Because it speaks to so much heritage, but they've made it super relevant in other really cool modern ways as well. But it comes down to bringing your community to that sense of place around placemaking. What is our sense of identity? What is common between us and how are we united by, by who we are as a sense of place? So it's a process, that process of creative placemaking is a, is a long term, usually two year process to come up with what is it that we all agree on and how are we then going to implement it and where are we going to put it?
I can totally see how that would add, just really cement a sense of place that, that bolsters economic development. But you can think of cities that do this well and that are very successful in filling their buildings.
Right, and then they brand the heck out of it. They brand it, market it, right? And next, you know, your businesses are supporting it, next thing you know, you've got all these things. But yes, it is a huge economic development tool. It's also meant to really think about, the original purpose of that actually came from blight and vacancies. So when we think about blight and vacancies in towns and East Lime, you don't have as much as, we deal in Norwich, right? My office is in Norwich, this is a huge issue in Norwich. But it's really thinking about how can we utilize, underutilized spaces or blighted spaces, even old railroad tracks and other things like that? How can we make them productive parts of our, of our, of our, you know, communities again? And usually it's the artwork that actually brings it in, it kind of disguises, it takes, but it brings new life to things and it creates that. So that's really where it came from was from how do we, how do we hide the ugliness of our town? And then it grew into this place where let's actually not just hide it and, and disguise it. Let's embrace who we are, let's infuse it into everything we can and let's use it to sell our city.
I was going to mention in the economics section of our P O C D currently, page 92, the last paragraph, that you have it in front of you, but it makes a statement that, right? They were talking about regulations and the lessening of regulations to promote economic development. But the statement here was it was a concern of doing so because of, by lessening the requirements for things like landscaping, aesthetic improvements, it may actually detract high quality development from locating within. So, you know, with that said, I think that's a big push. And then I heard, of course, you know, I'm thinking tax dollars, there's a, there's a correlation scientifically. Here are some study, I'd have to track it down, but if we have that, I think, I mean, that's a no brainer. And if the, the P O C D is already saying, hey, we need to think about other ways of promoting economic development rather than, I want to call it expansion, right? This sprawl. I think this is, this is a good, good way to do it.
Yeah, and I think you know, part of that process, certainly around the cultural district, municipal cultural districts, the formation of those. I will tell you that it took us six months to come up with a process that we could all agree on. The original process in Massachusetts was that the town had to form a commission. And we were all like, oh my God, please, we cannot have any more commissions in these towns, no way. So there are, there's a few options as to how you can have an overseeing commission or have it go into your economic development commission or even any parks and rec could do it. But you can use an existing commission to become the cultural district managers. But the idea behind that really is to think intentionally about what are the assets here? How can we use them? What's our brand? What's our marketing? But also what's the receptiveness of your, how do you want to use it? I'm not sure how, you know, open East Lime residents are to having major tourism in town, right? I mean, that's something that you, that creative placemaking process allows you to have discussions around what is acceptable levels of how, how big we want to go, right? Do we want a massive public art sculpture that's going to bring in a million people a year? Probably not, right? But New London would love that. And so we've talked about things like that. But so there, there's a process of understanding how you want to use your assets and to what length you want to have them in terms of what's reasonable and what are your purposes of economic development? Is it to drive new businesses, new residents or new development? And that's for the, that's for the community to have input on.
We, I mean, we do identify in the, in the P O C D as is, that Niantic serves as the cultural center for the town. So I think that's, and I think if we can make that recommendation, I need to learn a little bit more about that process of creating a cultural center. But I guess I would put it out to the committee here, whether or not that's something we'd want to recommend is develop a cultural center. And if we can use another commission versus creating another one, that, that's good news.
I'd certainly be comfortable with something that says explore the development of a cultural district. You know, a creative, explore the development of creative placemaking planning.
Well, you can do both, right? So you can actually, you could actually, so I would recommend that you put in quite a few, you know, the loosey goosey ones, right? Explore, pursue, consider. But I would look at a creative placemaking planning project, right? That would be a lot, that's one, about who, 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 what is the identity of the town and what is it, what is our brand, right? The second one would be explorer, becoming, having a municipal cultural district, right? Making downtown Niantic a cultural district, explore that. And then I would also think of the other ways of, you know, just truly transportation. And then it goes into other areas of your P O C D, right? In terms of how can we feed it into housing? How can we feed it into, you don't have public health there, but certainly the, the cultural natural resources, transportation, economic development, residential and development, all of those areas, you can weave it in there. We can help with some of the language around that about explore this and do that. But certainly those big ones of consider a municipal cultural district and, you know, I would go stronger than explore, you know, kind of, you know, have, actually do a creative placemaking process within 10 years. There's no reason why you shouldn't be able to do that. And get some points from sustainable C T for doing that.
I have one more, one more comment. So in your presentation, you talked about like. Um, so in your presentation, you talked about like. Every topic that goes in our P O C D, which I thought is really great. And one of the things that seems like it's an issue, like townwide, is like getting people to be interested in. Transportation, in municipal planning, in whatever economic, you know, like your, your citizens in town, it's hard to engage them. And I feel like adding an art component to each of those different areas. Maybe that would help spark some interest of people in town to get involved.
Yeah.
So that's a completely different take on, on, on the benefits, I think, than what you said, but I think it's important.
Yeah, I mean, think about how, um, how community driven and oriented your local artists are. They're often very connected in terms of the community and arts organizations, cultural organization, in major events. When you say, like, for, for example, New London, they had a whole streetlight project where there was just an issue with the streetlights being out. And it was causing a lot of fears around and perceptions around danger and insecurity and, and safety issues. And instead of just going and replacing the streetlights, they had a discussion where let's bring the artists in and talk about. What artists can do in terms of not only making the streetlights more beautiful to look at from, from the, from the, from the patio, the pedestrian point of view. But also is there a unique or, you know, a different way of actually lighting up the city? Uh, that may be more interesting with colored lights, with different, you know, facing lights. All of a sudden you had artists talking about lighting projects in the city, right? Around the parking garage. And next thing you know, they brought in a whole new lens that brought in the community into a process of what do we wanted to? So it, it immediately got the community more engaged because you just widened the table. To bring in probably the, the last person you normally would have brought to the table previously is now the first person you would have brought to the table. And I can tell you right now that in other cities and across the nation, certainly around the world, we are seeing artists really truly at the table. Um, I mean permanently, in public housing, in economic development and real, and development. Um, definitely in transportation, that the country is actually funding arts in transit, arts and transportation. Um, to think about how we make public transportation more um, attractive or, you know, there are a lot of things around public, around just transportation and transportation hubs. But arts really are actually being funded in a, maybe not post covid, um, but at least up until now. Um, the federal government has invested heavily. In making sure that transportation is accessible and attractive and not considered such a, you know. Public transportation being such a negative thing to do. They've really brought artists in to think about how it changes their perception of public transportation and bus usage and rail usage and things like that. And they're putting those artists and residents there to actually think about how they. How they can attract people to want to use more public transportation in, in larger cities, but um. I, you, you can, you name any topic on your P O C D and I will tell, I can give you ten different ways that arts can be integrated into that.
Thank you. This is great. I'm sure Gary, um. Were you about to say something, Gary? I was just going to go through the timeline.
Yeah, well, I was going to make the, the other two comments she mentioned, uh, in terms of, obviously, you know, we can see the direct correlation with economic development, but she also talked about uh, crime. And I'm thinking in terms of the, the, the like emergency services section. Should we make a statement on there that, you know, somehow we're going to tie the two together? So being that we have the transportation section ready, kind of ready to go, and now I'm thinking, okay, can we get a paragraph in there? On arts and culture, same with the, the emergency services side. So, I mean, maybe tomorrow I can work on that. Send it out to the group.
Makes sense.
Let me know how I can help you that. That, that really, yeah, it's interesting. We've in, in Groton rate the past, well, pre covid again. We were working for about nine months with the Groton Beautification Committee. Um, and one of the things we did was bring in the heads of the police departments and the E M S and all of the. To understand where those spaces were in the city that were causing more of the criminal activity and spaces that were open. That were often vacant and underutilized and kind of hidden away with brush and overgrown. Understanding from the police department where those spaces were and then having artists come in and actually really. Brighten them up, lighten them up, put some, some things in there that all of a sudden the spaces become community owned. And the criminal activity kind of just dissipates. And there's data to support that as well, but it's integrating. Um, you know, thinking about how we change the spaces, public art spaces with spaces that are normally having vandalism or crime.
I actually have a map, a heat map that an intern did for us, uh, for the police station. Um, it's like two years old. Is that, do you think that would need to be updated or do you think?
I mean, it's. Yeah, they, yeah, it always needs to be updated in terms of, but it's thinking, yeah, because you want to think about which, which hotspots have been there for ten years, not just this year. Which hotspots have been there for life? You're going to invest money into changing that space. You want to invest in the ones that have been consistently trouble areas in your town.
I'll run that by Mike tomorrow and just get a quick answer and then we can maybe even incorporate the map into the P O C D.
Excellent. Um, so Wendy, if you can um, get that uh PowerPoint to Gary, that would be great. We can um, get it into just like our official kind of data file that we've been keeping. And um, I, I'm sure Gary informed you, the, the draft P O C D is due to our Board of Selectmen. August fourth or fifth. So we are.
Gary, I don't know that you mentioned that.
Against it, um, another uh covid casualty here was our um, timeline, but um.
We're, we've got shovel ready stuff, so we can help you get it.
Yeah, we, unfortunately, we.
I'm here to help. We'll make it happen.
Thank you, Wendy. I really appreciate you being here tonight. Does anybody else have any questions?
Nice. I was living in New York. I saw a lot of the artistic renditions in the subway system out there.
Uh, well, Rich, you're speaking.
Beautiful by the city.
You're, um, my first, um, my first real job was actually with the arts and transit system in New York City, working in the subway stations, doing the artwork. Uh, which is the largest public art system in the United States with the best known artists, but. It is, um, it's the, it's the percent for art program. So one percent of every capital project in New York City goes to public art. And so in every station, subway, rail, bus stop, there is artwork integrated, either as, you know, a shelter, as um, a guardrail. As tile on the wall in the subway. So you're speaking to somebody who has had a hand in actually putting in three stations worth of artwork in New York City that still live on today. Um, and that is a, a pipe dream of mine for Connecticut.
Made the subway, uh, ride a lot more pleasant.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Yeah, you're speaking my language, right? Great. Well, it was nice meeting you all. Here to help. Let me know how else I can help. I'll send that on to Gary. Gary, let's connect again soon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the receptive audience. I love it when it goes over well. Thanks.
Okay, um. Good energy to start the meeting.
Yeah, for sure.
It's fun.
Um, so while we're still on economic development, I know that's a section that we have uh not completed a first draft on. So just for logistics purposes, do we want to talk that out here?
Everything that she just said and that'll be it.
Well, I just, uh, we have some other stuff that's still relevant. We have some things that. Are either complete or no longer relevant, but I'm really just kind of looking to crystallize. Who is drafting that section? I think that it's Gary, but Gary, I'm not trying to voluntold you that here.
No, no, I, I've started working on it. Uh, and as I read through, I've already, you know. Uh, the first, so you finished the residential section, correct?
Yeah.
Now this, what this does is it breaks the, the rest of those land uses, the commercial and industrial down into, you know, their economic components, so. Um, there's a few for industrial land, there's, there's seven. Recommendations currently and uh, and we just talked with Brad, but. Recommendation three was begin a coordinated program with the Board of Selectmen to install utilities, specifically water and sewers. To those areas not being served at this time. Two of the four industrial areas served by sewers. Two of the four industries are served by sewers. The third area at Colton Road is currently being connected for economic and environmental reasons. And the fourth area north of Interstate ninety-five off exit seventy-four should be served by sewer and water pending private or public funding. I'm going to follow up with Brad just to confirm all of that, but I think all of that has been done by, by now.
Yeah, and I did finish commercial and industrial, so we can go through that tonight. I did go, I, I took. I adapted the new commercial and industrial chapter after what was existing, but kind of spread out elsewhere, but there, there is some other. Specific economic development, it's, it's own section in the existing, yeah?
Yeah, I'm reading out of chapter four.
Right.
Like it's chapter four, economic development, industrial land, four point two, and then they talk about commercial. Uh, it, so some of these recommendations I've already gone through and they, like con step, I don't think they still exist. Do they still exist? This, I'm sure what organization they are.
Yeah, I think some of this might be even hangover from ninety-nine.
I think so. So there's a lot here that needs to get kind of. Cut and we were.
You're speaking my language, Gary. Shorten this document, priority number one. I don't have the bicep strength to. Lug the next iteration of this around. So, okay, so. Gary is going to work on economic development and before we adjourn tonight, we do need to schedule our. Uh, next meeting because it was scheduled over by a planning commission, public hearing. So um, we'll plan to review economic development draft section at the next meeting.
Sounds good. The, the one question I did have is, it kind of relates to transportation. Uh, but it's in here, it's uh, again, we're lobbying for a rail stop in the Niantic Central Business District. Now that this is a, an effort that has been pursued in the past and it's kind of failed in that uh. There, there's not enough stopping distance between the new bridge and.
Yeah.
Town center. We looked at.
Kind of would put that in the same category as Route eleven.
It's kind of where it's ending up.
Yeah.
So I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be against removing that.
I agree.
Okay.
It's never going to happen, so I don't see the point of carrying it on.
Okay. And I think the rest I can pretty much just easily edit. And right, lies, and then we'll have to just, just go through and discuss the recommendations.
And maybe, maybe add a bullet item as a contingency for the state uh, funding levels. Cause there, there's some uncertainty there about how much money the state's going to continue to give the town, right? I mean, we, as planning, we have to, we have to at least say there's some risk there, right?
Yep, you're right. Um, the other thing that we had talked about adding to economic development that is kind of a crossover recommendation. With Parks and Recreation was the addition of possible new revenue streams through uh, food truck permits. At things like Bridebrook Park where they don't have concessions. Um, for, or maybe expanding allowable food truck um, usage at the. Beaches or, you know, whatever, certain times. That was in econo, that was a Parks and Rec, but crossover economic development uh, recommendation. So if we could at least just kind of nod to it in both sections.
Those park and rec saying they want to provide concessions and that.
That is a recommendation that came out of this committee myself. Um, that it, having spent a lot of time on Saturdays. At the Bridebrook Park soccer fields, there are no amenities and driving by. Um, people are there all day long. So to me, it was um. A missed opportunity for the town to uh, solve two problems at once, bring in some revenue and uh, provide something useful. For people who are in town, uh, stuck. Maybe they want to be there. I feel stuck uh, in a particular location for a length of time, such as. A soccer field. We, we did put some language in there about not conflicting with addition, with existing, you know, efforts from like. Little League concession stand or whatever, but just that it, it is an opportunity that should be examined.
Gotcha. Okay, so we'll work that in under.
Some arts, some, whatever they have, whatever Wendy has for arts. If, if, I mean, that would be something I'd be interested in seeing how.
That art stuff.
Cause I was thinking like, that might, I don't know, would that fall better under that municipal section? Where we have municipal buildings and services?
Uh, so yeah, so we have, uh, yeah, that community spaces thing. I definitely think that we should um. Mention it in there, it, under Parks and Rec, um, it, but I think that it should. I think that its primary home with the biggest explanation should be in economic development because I. While executions of it will touch different chapters of the plan, I think. In general, it is an economic development strategy to create. These, this stronger sense of place through art.
I'm sorry, I, I was referring to the food service.
Oh.
Yeah, so, uh, cause I'm, I'm also thinking about the uh, vendor trucks, right? Uh, I think we have a couple in town. Now, I'm not certain which, which ones get. Their vendor permit from the front office versus getting zoning approval. Um, there's always been some confusion on my end, but I let Bill handle that. Uh, that's his deal, so. I'm just thinking if, if these food service trucks want opportunity at Bridebrook, right? And, and that's an economic component, right? That, 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 if we promoted food trucks, we'd be promoting economic development as well. Where then the town wouldn't be receiving that revenue stream unless we just issue a bunch of permits. Preventing and I, 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 that might, I'm just wondering where park and rec would fall on the, the two options.
How does the Flavor King truck have the permission to operate out of the beach parking lots?
Think that.
Like that.
I think they have a vendor's permit through the, uh, Selectmen's Office. So they would have to just issue, I'm not sure what those costs I could. But I'm saying that's one option is to go down that road. But I don't know if that's as lucrative, if, if the town ran their own concession stand, they have a building there now, they could add on to it and. Or convert the existing building from a, where, you know, just a storage facility to. You know, a small kitchen. Ideas, I'm thinking, I'll have to talk with Dave Putnam, maybe refine that idea.
Yeah, great. Sounds good.
I have to insert my opinion of government. Trying to get involved in business. Probably going to lose money. Somehow we'll figure out how to lose money. So I think the little we get from permits is probably more than the profit you're going to get. The town running a business. And that being said, uh, I wanted to also insert. Uh, the town occasionally, I don't know for sure who is, there's some moorings out, just outside the bridge. Uh, transient boaters coming in. I think the economic development should include some kind of uh. Enhancement to the marine industry, which is our biggest industry in town. By far. Anything we can do to reasonably help or promote. Further commercial activities.
Marine related.
Yeah, uh, it, when the town gets involved with. Collecting dock fees, mooring fees. Again, I don't think the town has any business doing things like that. It should be. Subbed out to give it, give the rights. I mean, we can, we can buy the, the docks.
Right, like, like a teeny.
The. But the management should be subbed out. To those who know what they're doing.
Okay.
Boats Incorporated or whoever. Uh, and that includes moorings, the little, little docks that will probably be. Installed someday. I'm totally against uh, government running businesses.
Okay.
I agree.
Um, yeah, so that just, I would think maybe the town could enter into some. Quasi-public, private partnership or call it a lease, right? But just like we do with the Blackhawk and the boats, we lease those docks to those businesses. You would lease a parking spot to a food truck or two. Um, which isn't a bad idea. I, I do know some breweries, I think there's one on Martha's Vineyard that. They don't have any food service, but they, they line the perimeter of the parking lot with various food trucks. So there's like five or six there and you. And now you have a variety of foods to choose from. Seems to work well for them, but. Uh, so I'm thinking something like that, maybe at Bridebrook would work, but. I'll talk with Dave and I, if everybody's in agreement with Norm's idea of being that. You know, the, the town shouldn't really get involved with. The business aspects of, you know, something like food service, then absolutely. And, and I think in terms of liability. It's a lot cheaper for the town too. We don't have to worry about food poisoning. We don't have to worry about hand washing and all of that. Let the private industry deal with the nightmare. hand washing and all of that. Let the private industry deal with the nightmare. I would agree with, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Anything else on economic development? Okay. So I'm just gonna head back to the agenda and start from the top of the section captain reports. Some of these things we have already completed, some we need to look at tonight, some are not ready tonight. So just kind of gonna go in order. Agricultural resources, we did already review and approve as a subcommittee, the recommendations, but I know Rosemary is just finishing up the draft. Any, anything we need to discuss there, Rosemary?
No.
Okay. Coastal resources I do have for you tonight. And if it's easiest, I can go ahead and do a screen share. Does that work? Okay. Okay, so, um, previously, we have been kind of reading the text of the working drafts as individuals and discussing the recommendations. Does that work for tonight? I know we have a number of sections to get through. Is that something that everyone would be comfortable with knowing that the key facts and the copy are, we can come to them with questions or we can go through the whole document line by line together? What's the group's feeling?
I'm okay with either.
I'd prefer to jump to the recommendations because we have so many. Especially knowing that we do have another, we'll have to have another meeting like in the next week or so. So we, we will have some time if there are, you know, kind of small issues or corrections in the text, but if there's a problem with a recommendation, that's probably something that we should flag early. So if that's okay with everybody, I'm just gonna hop to the recommendations. Okay. So just to walk you through where I got to on this. Things in this section came out of the 2009 P O C D, our stakeholder groups. We got feedback from the Niantic River Watershed Protection, Niantic River Watershed Commission and their updated Niantic River Watershed Protection Plan. We did hear from Save the River, Save the Hills. We heard from the Harbor Management Commission. And I was able to go through their plan in detail. This section was also informed by the StanTech Community Postal Resiliency Study that we're familiar with from December 2018. And there's a couple other documents that I can't recall off the top of my head, but they're listed here. So as I see them, I will flag them. So jumping into the recommendations. First one, no, this was an, this was a section that I felt was com- very comprehensive and touches a lot of other already approved municipal and regional planning documents. So I wanted to get those in here right at the top because a lot of them go into more detail than would be appropriate for the plan of conservation and development, I thought. If some of them are their own hundred plus page documents. So the first recommendation is to support the goals and recommendations of the East Line Harbor Management Plan developed March 2019 and the Niantic River Watershed Protection Plan, which should be approved next month as comprehensive documents addressing best practices for the protection and utilization of our coastal resources. Those were the two official ones that I found for East Line. There are regional ones too. Talk about the Long Island Sound Blue Plan. But I thought that these were the most appropriate. Gary, are there any others?
Locally, I'm not aware of any. Harbor Management, you know, the shellfish. They, they typically will weigh in, but that may fall more under like natural resources.
Or agriculture?
Or agriculture. But we could list it here. It's a crossover.
Okay. And that is the East Line Waterford Shellfish Commission Plan. I'll look that up. Are we comfortable with recommendation number one? Okay. Two, develop the following educational campaigns. Townwide education and/or ordinances regarding best practices in landscaping and lawn management to improve water quality through reduced nitrates and other pollution and runoff. I marked a part, possible partnership here with the Niantic River Watershed Commission. As you remember, maybe like six or so months ago, they did get a deep grant to expand their program in, in this area. They had launched a, a successful pilot program and achieved grant funding to extend it. So I thought that was a worthy educational campaign. Communications campaign to educate property owners and in current and future flood zones on the risks, mitigations, techniques, and updated policies. This came out of the StanTech study. So is one of the recommendations there about making sure flood risk property owners know the risks. What mitigation practices they can utilize and any tools available to them or updated regulations as those come through from various other municipal statewide or federal organizations. Educational campaign on proper maintenance of septic systems. This actually also shows up in the water and wastewater management. But here it is directly related to water quality in the coastal resources, particularly for some of the neighborhoods that are not sewered but sit very close to our water bodies like Saunders Point, the Huntley Court area where failing septics could present a real risk to the water quality. And this last one also came, it's mentioned in a couple places, but was in the Niantic River Watershed Protection Plan. Campaigns on the impact of animal waste to water bodies for dog owners and also campaigns to discourage against feeding of wildlife. The concern here is the nitrates generated by animal waste of all kinds, goose poop, dog poop.
Good spot to add some arts and culture.
Yes.
I would comment here that, that animal waste thing, that campaign has been going on for the last 10 years. We, and it's kind of, it's, it's, it's kind of risen up and died down, but they started somewhere about 10 years ago. I remember Public Works got brochures and of course here's the guy walking the dog on Long Island Sound and the dog is going to the bathroom. So and it, it was a good campaign, but we've done it in the past. So I'm thinking if we still have the issue, we haven't solved it.
Yep.
I have another partnership you might want to consider would be, you know, we get the Lime Times every month or so, maybe, maybe a partnership with them where we have something like the coastal corner or the environmental corner or some of the, you know, like Nickerson has his Selectman Corner kind of thing, like a, like a, a periodic piece that talks to some of your educational goals that you have here.
Great thought. I will add that in. Are we on board with the content of the recommendation?
Nope.
Okay. And number three is prioritize existing plans to extend domestic wastewater sewer to homes located along. All right. So this, yeah. This we are, also is addressed in water and wastewater. We talked about it in more detail with Brad today. So this could have a a slight tweak moving forward, but there, um, I believe that there's existing plans for some of the sensitive neighborhoods to receive sewer. So this recommendation prioritizes those plans for, for those neighborhoods and then covers, if not require the periodic inspection and pumping out of home septic systems and the repair or replacement of those that are malfunctioning. So that's kind of this, it's different than the educational campaign on septic systems. It's more of a regulation on septic systems. So they're meant to go in tandem. Homeowner, this is why maintaining your septic is a good thing to do and also it is required.
On this point, Michelle, I, I guess the question is the, the extent, I mean, whether the town will extend the sewer system, you know, we had the discussion. You know, I don't know what the towns, you know, the sewer and water sewer commissioner are ultimately going to do, but the question here, would it be worth considering, do we, you know, do you extend the system to existing homes only or to new construction?
Yeah. And that is this, so it's a recommendation that appears with the same end result, but for two reasons in the plan, right? So here it, the, the recommendation addresses specifically water body health, right? And in, as, when we get to the water and wastewater management section, it talks about making those decisions on sewer capacity in a way that balances this point, new development, commercial versus residential, the things we talked about with Brad today.
Okay. So they, you don't think, they won't conflict. I just don't-
I don't think so. I'm, I'll make a note for our discussion tonight, because I have water and wastewater for us to review tonight, while it also has to go to Brad. And I think the way it's written, they complement, not conflict each other.
All, you know, and I know as we talk, I don't know if, maybe further on, there's another point. But as you, you're talking about the pump out of home septic systems, but we also have the pump out boat.
Yep, that comes next. Yeah, it's in here. It talks about continuing our current obligations to, to fund that boat. This one is, number four is support the detailed stormwater drainage recommendations for Flanders and Niantic outlined in the 2020 Niantic River Watershed Protection Plan and the StanTech Coastal Resilience Climate Adaptation and Sustainability Study. So I can list those out completely, but both plans offer specific projects where stormwater management is kind of a problem now. And so this recommendation is designed to support those specific projects. I, later, there is a recommendation about developing a stormwater management plan in general, but this recommendation is for the specific projects between the two documents. There's like a dozen in those, like, uh, I can tell you what they are.
There's also a section in, um, emergency management and I think we talked about it in transportation too.
Yeah.
For the same, the same topics or the same, you know, trying to identify the same neighborhoods.
Yeah. So I gave, the, the ones in transportation are the critical roadway alterations for emergency access and climate adaptation. Those are some identified roads. The drainage improvements that apply to this plan from the StanTech study are Hope Street, Blackpoint Road, Burnap Road.
Yeah. I got those three for sure.
And then, uh, Niantic River Watershed Protection Plan has a few in the Flanders area as well.
I don't know if I, we'll have to look for those in, in those two sections. Also. So you're not listing them, listing them out here individually?
I can. I certainly can. But I made it a blanket-
You don't, you don't have to. It's just remind me later or remind, remind ourselves later to make sure that they are addressed specifically in those, in those other, where it's appropriate, just so we don't miss one.
Okay. Yeah. Well, you know what? I will detail them out here because the, there's kind of two sections and this one's specific to stormwater versus the roadway projects that I think are in transportation.
Or, or maybe, or maybe if you want to listen, look at, look at the other sections and see if they're covered appropriately there. If they are, then you won't have to here.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know.
Okay. Are we comfortable with this?
Yeah. Yeah.
The fifth one also comes from the StanTech study, which is to adopt the state of Connect, Connecticut's definition of freeboard into the zoning regulations. Norm, has this come up at zoning for you yet?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So this is in the, that 2018 study and essentially it seems to be kind of a definition for building regulations.
Correct. Yeah. The, the, during the study, one of the concerns that the building official had as well as the zoning official was that with sea level rise, we're going to need to increase freeboard. And he ultimately wanted more discretion in determining how much and that, you know, whether it's one foot or two. I think most of the towns that have adopted a freeboard have adopted a one foot increase. New London, I think is the only municipality who's adopted two. So, uh, but again, this is a recommendation and, you know, it would be up to the zoning commission to enact that. Under the FEMA floodplain regulations.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm good with it. I-
This one made a lot of sense to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, a, a number of our coastal resources are referenced in various open space acquisition documents. So recommendation six touches on those to support the acquisition of open space as detailed in the East Line Open Space Plan. The Niantic River Watershed Protection Plan also has some identified priority parcels for open space. The StanTech study has some identified parcels for open space in terms of resiliency. And the Nature Conservancy's Salt Marsh Advancement Zone Assessment of East Line also makes, I think there's just one parcel in that. But these are directly related to either water quality or coastal resilience. So that's what is explained in item six. The StanTech study suggested that the town explore acquisition of flood damaged property in the event that a property owner does not want to rebuild as further resilience to take that, a resilience measure to take that property and, you know, plant either living shoreline or, you know, leave it as open space for further resilience.
I don't know whether any of these plans include Crescent, Crescent Beach and McCook's Point beach as far as the erosion of the beach. I mean, the beaches are gone in front of the Crescent Beach houses.
Yeah.
Absolutely gone.
Yeah.
So and to build a couple of probably two groins like one already exists at Crescent Beach. And at the hole in the wall, which brings in a ton of sand. It's, it's, they're magnificent ideas. That, that is, that's urgent.
It's funny that you say that because that comes up in item eight.
Okay.
Groin, uh, so, um, quickly, item seven, that's an easy one. Evaluate the impact of sea level rise on critical infrastructure, which that, that this is mentioned here in coastal resources because it applies, but it is explained further in water and wastewater where some of our pump stations are in areas that certainly are likely to be impacted. So that's just a quick nod to it here as it's a crossover recommendation. But eight specifically talks about some of that stuff. specifically talks about some of that stuff and groynes really seem to be thought of. And Gary, I'm, I'm gonna look for your input and backup on this as well, as a dated measure for protection and no longer desirable. And have been replaced by recommendations like offshore breakwaters under, um, under the water and more kind of natural erosion protection measures like living shorelines. But most of the documentation is kind of discouraging hard structures like that.
I would agree. Most of the recommendations that have been pushed forward to the municipalities have been softening the shoreline. Um, and I think part of the idea is that if it's done right during a storm event, it's gonna take the brunt, it's gonna get destroyed, but it's a hell of a lot cheaper to repair. So, uh, than trying to repair a hard structure. I think that's the, a little bit of the intent behind it, uh, but we have seen various places along the coast here in Connecticut, different methodologies and some work better than others. Certainly, I did have some conversations. I don't know if you're familiar with Jesse Baldwin. He used to work for GZA Environmental. I think he still does. Although he had approached me with a, uh, there was some grant money a few years back and he was at the idea of creating one of these living shorelines off of basically I call it Amtrak Beach and in that area, just outside of Hole in the Wall, uh, where we had the revetment portion. So I thought it was a great idea. The problem is finding dollars to actually do it. We weren't able to get in, a hold of any, uh, because by the time the grant was needed to be submitted, we only had a month to write it and he needed more time. So I thought he had a great idea though, but when you look at Crescent Beach, when you look at even Giant's Neck and down in that area, the erosion problem is significant. I'm not sure what the exact answer is, but I think like the offshore, you know, breakwaters, this was something we contemplated for economic development, um, off of Hole in the Wall. Deep was kinda, you know, they, they weren't really on board with a, with a breakwater, although they did recommend, it was like a floating breakwater, one that you could easily pull in. So we weren't impacting the seafloor bottom. And that was very palatable to them. I don't know what that cost was, but, uh, so that was something that kind of made sense. We could put it out in the summer, take it in the winter. Um, and put moorings behind it. But then we get into issues with shell fishing and the shell fishermen didn't necessarily want that because once you put a mooring in, you now create an arc that you can't fish. So we've had some issues there. So in terms of addressing the, the road and beach erosion issue, I think, you know, again, this is a great recommendation. I would, uh, you know, harden structures. We know that those offshore breakwaters work. You know, maybe in, you know, maybe there's something, you know, on the DEP end that they can look at. But in terms of creating reef, uh, we're losing our coral reefs around the world. Well, here's an opportunity to put in a hardened structure to create the reef that also provides protection. So that, that could, there could be more to look at here is all I'm saying. While deep maybe moving away from the hardened structure model, there still could be a very good use for it, maybe in, in conjunction with some of these softer methodologies.
I know, I know deep does not like groynes. For some reason. But
I think it's because it, it takes the sand from one spot, moves it to the other. And so one beach will lose sand. The other beach will grow. And so you put another groin in and it just keeps going down the shoreline. So if you look even on our shoreline, all the beaches is one side of the beach is, is lopsided. It's just heavy on sand.
McCook's point itself, the point is actually like a groin. Why we, that's why we have a beach there. Yes, it, it trap, it traps sand. But if you add, if you dump sand after you build the two groynes, you will maintain that level of sand. You maintain the beach. You can go up to North Stonington, Volantown, anywhere and get beach sand. It's cheap. Every couple of years and that will, that, that will work. I have some experience in this stuff, but because the, the Niantic Bay Yacht Club Breakwater was built in the mid-sixties. And yes, you're right, we have taken sand away from Crescent Beach and it, it contributes to the problem. But the two groynes with periodic loading of sand to the beach, like they did on the Niantic Bay Beach, um, that, that'll work, but I, I don't quite understand why deep doesn't like them. You talk about the offshore breakwaters, they are absolutely beyond comprehension. The, the cost to do something like that. And the floating breakwaters, they used to make them out of tires. Just a row of tires. The hurricane is the enemy of something like that. That whole pile of junk will end up on the beach. With a groin, the hurricane is your friend, because the hurricane will often bring sand in. Sometimes it takes it away. It, it's, it's a funny animal. But, uh, anyway.
I think that the what informed this recommendation was a so the, a lot of the reading acknowledges the fact that we have been fighting coastlines, which would ordinarily ebb and flow and change over months and years and decades. We've been fighting them to remain in a stagnant state and a certain, you know, shape and volume of sand. And that, that approach may be futile and not as effective against rising seas and increasing storms as trying to adopt a more natural approach where we kind of allow these things to happen as they would. And some, and a coastline expands somewhere and retracts somewhere, but I understand what you're saying in terms of recreation and economic development.
The thing is, Crescent Beach, if the seawall along Crescent Beach is, becomes a bulkhead, that, those houses are in they're in jeopardy.
I think they're in jeopardy.
Already?
Anyway.
Oh, yeah, but.
Which is, sounds insensitive. It's not. It's a concern.
Two new ones just went up, you know?
Not to mention, it extends to that other body of water on the other side of this, there in, in practice, they're an island, that strip.
Yep.
Yep. But I'm in favor of number eight.
Okay, thanks for taking us up. Number nine is, uh, Norm, I think we can put in, uh, some of your thoughts earlier on partnerships here. Encourage expansion of marine-related commerce in Niantic and apply controls to maintain, upgrade and expand where possible water-dependent commercial uses in the Lower Niantic River as appropriate for the overall health of the water body.
Perfect.
Cut paste that into economic development.
Great. Maintain and improve the quality of East Lima's coastal waters through local action and support state and federal water quality control measures. Look to minimize the pollution of coastal waters from erosion and runoff by vigorously enforcing the erosion and sedimentation ordinance, which I don't know if that was enacted.
I don't believe it was.
Okay, and so we're gonna
I think we
Create one. I, I know it was, so it was in the 2009 P O C D and I thought it was enacted, but couldn't find it. So, um, I'm gonna make a note there that it was not enacted. But that came straight out of the 2009.
We have, uh, regulations in our subdivision regs where the planning commission, as part of the subdivision, would approve a plan.
Yes.
But I don't do, I don't think zoning has anything like that specifically, where you have to approve a part that just the E N S plan is being certified. Planning Commission has to certify that the E N S plan is adequate. It's just kind of a separate thing and they, they do it through the motion of approving the subdivision, but it, it's, they make the finding on the record that, yes, the E N S plan meets all of our criteria and the regs. So I guess my question would be, does zoning do much of that, Norm?
No, not really.
So, you know, the, the recommendation might be, because the issue we have now at, at the, you know, the
Camera views, camera views.
Camera views, but at the, where Bill, uh, the issue he has is unless the site is five acres or greater, he doesn't really have any regulation over the E N S aspects. It's, he needs more teeth. And that's where a regulation enactment would, you know, if it was an acre or less and that you had an erosion problem. You know, most people are pretty good about cleaning things up, but there are instances where it's kind of, it's out of our control because we don't have the ability to actually tell someone who's cleared an acre of land on a five acre site or a three acre site to go, you know, put up silt fence. You know, obviously if it's running into the road or something and it's coming into the town road, well, that's a civil issue between the town and that property owner, right? And we can address it, uh, if it's going into the catch basin. But if it's, you know, running off onto neighboring property and the neighbor's calling the town to, hey, I got this problem, my neighbor, there's nothing we can do.
I can attest to that.
I'm thinking, uh, it could be a recommendation to adopt a zoning reg that would give more power to, to enforce.
And that's out of the 2009. So I changed it to that we should enforce the one that was there because I thought that it had been enacted in the 2009. It says to create one.
Okay.
So I can just re-change the tense on that.
And I think the word, do you want to, do you capitalize the word federal on the sentence above?
Certainly can.
I just saw state was capital.
Thank you. Are we comfortable to move on? Consider regulations on landscape products that can negatively impact water quality. This is intentionally written softly as something that we can consider, but, um, it also may apply to the PFAS conversation that we were having earlier with Brad. So this would be in here to, um, for us to consider. Let's say further roundup type research is released or this, uh, the PFAS task force comes out with recommendations on water quality and PFAS levels. This would help us there.
Should we insert road, road maintenance products as well?
Yes, absolutely we can. And salt is mentioned in that. And I'll, you know what? And I'll put and other because I was thinking of firefighting foam.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is a new one, open to feedback on this, but as an avid litter remover in our town, I would love to see us put something in here about seeking ways to make pollution from litter and debris less likely, um, either through increased number of trash cans. I once sat in a study from the Disney Institute about how they did a study at Disney World and found that people would only carry a piece of trash 25 feet on average before dropping it on the ground. So that's why there are, uh, trash cans placed 24 feet apart in the Disney parks. But some other things, um, you know, there's a lot of debris that goes straight into the storm drain after the Niantic Light Parade. Confetti, single wrapped, uh, candy canes, uh, things like that. And I think it's worth adding a sentence in to explore some ways that we can kind of proactively get a handle on some of that stuff. Shout out if, you know, there's any objections as we go through these. This one, a support, this, this comes out of crossover on the agriculture section. Support aquaculture programs and research efforts to maintain and improve East Lima's shellfish resources. It's kind of a blanket statement that pops up in a few of the different documents we reference. I figure they can go into it in more detail there.
Yeah, I did look, um, the Shellfish Commission, all they have are regulations. They don't have a plan or anything.
Okay. Okay, so if they were going to adopt their regulations to maintain and improve East Lima's shellfish resources, that would be consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Number 14 comes, uh, straight out of the 2009. And so I'm not sure if it's still applicable, um, but this is about periodic maintenance dredging. So in general, the plan discourages dredging. However, there are some areas where dredging is encouraged either after particularly bad storm damage where, uh, there's been, you know, a, a bunch of sand going from Crescent Beach into a water body. Or where there are navigation channels such as the mouth of the Niantic River and Smith Cove. Good?
Yeah, I'm good. I, I think in terms of dredging, there, there's just a cost issue here and but I'm, I'm okay with the recommendation. I just don't know that's realistic.
I agree. But, uh, let's see.
It's gonna be an issue in the future at some point where we'll have to keep the channel open and at the same time, you know?
Yeah, exactly. So this next one was also a 2009 P O C D recommendation that I could not figure out if it happened or not. Non-infringement, spelled incorrectly, area controls.
Non-infringement area. I don't believe we have any non-infringement area controls.
It would have been part of the zoning regs.
There, there, there's nothing to prohibit someone from building right up upon the water. Obviously they have to do it with permits and go through the process, so. But that said, it can be designed and engineered to be built, you know, you, you can put in a bulkhead, right? So those things are permissible.
So this would be, this is a, that, and I copy pasted this right out of 2009. So it, it enacts provisions that require a buffer strip between the portion of the lot to be developed and any of the above resources, which are like sensitive water bodies, beaches, watercourses, wetlands. Construction of buildings and septic systems is prohibited in the non-infringement area, which is the buffer, as are other activities that disturb the area, such as filling, evacuate, excavation and stripping of vegetation. So it was to develop a zoning regulation that required a buffer when a property is in or abuts these.
Inland wetlands, water course, water body, beaches.
Immediately adjacent to beaches, dunes and bluffs.
I think, uh, well, yeah, buffer strip or maybe I may, might use a different term and refer to it as the non-infringement area. I think a buffer might be confusing and misleading.
Okay, so so such provisions require the reservation of a non-infringement area strip?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, okay. So we're comfortable with that one as a carryover from 2009?
In terms of coastal resources, yeah, I think, you know, I mean, there there's certainly going to be some discussion here as it relates to inland wetlands, obviously, right? Because you had the Wetland Agency proposing a five hundred foot upland review area.
Right.
So we'll probably get some comments on on that in terms of the inland wetland piece, but and again, if we're talking coastal resources, you know, you do have inland wetlands within the coastal boundary, so you have to put it in there.
Yeah.
So, just as a heads up.
Should I leave it in?
I would.
Okay, so I'm gonna check this off because that was a comment that we can now resolve. Asagachi Hills Preservation is Open Space, another one that comes straight out of the two thousand nine. And this is directly copy pasted from two thousand nine.
I think the sentence event has still been the same.
Seventeen, also a copy paste out of two thousand nine. So here is where we want some dredging and want the state to pay for it. So mouth the four mile river, Nyonic River at Golden Spur. And it specifically mentioned this nineteen eighty-two flooding. I don't know if that, if damage from that is still relevant.
You could probably delete and just say dredging in the Golden Spur, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just say to restore circulation. Smith Cove and the Nyonic River, and then supporting water flow projects, including dredging from storm damaged coastal areas and tidal ponds. That is supports the other, our initial position on dredging also from the two thousand nine P O C D.
Why did you eliminate the mention of the eighty-two flood?
I just did now because I wasn't sure if it was relevant. I can certainly put it back in.
I just want to take a look at it.
Yep. Well, I'm doing it wrong.
You can put it back.
Yeah, I'm trying to put it back. And here we go. It is back.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that that's the way it's written is irrelevant, really.
Yeah, so I was just gonna go to restore circulation.
Yep.
Okay. That could have made it one page shorter. We don't know. We'll see. Last two home stretch. Thanks for sticking with me. This is a nod to our clean energy chapter, still being developed, but also being mindful of some of the recent issues in town. While this plan supports the overall development and expansion of clean energy technology, regulations for clean energy and watershed areas should be developed to protect watersheds from the negative. So like essentially making sure that we have regulations on file. Not recommending what they are, just recommending that they exist.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Would have been helpful with the solar farm, even though that was approved by the siting council.
Yeah. I agree. And then this is nineteen is also from two thousand nine. Where possible, encourage the use of low impact development such as pervious surfaces for driveways or similar surfaces that would otherwise have direct runoff from impervious surfaces. Kind of standard. These are the documents that I cite. All approved municipal or regional or otherwise shown to have integrity plants. Um, just to add to some of these, my students had some recommendations that related to this section, so toss them in there. And I did not have time to do that tonight. I will have those ready for the next meeting. Also, I forgot about the methodology section that I wrote, so I was just looking at the what's it called, the table of contents here, and I just put it in the background section in the table of contents. Okay. So just talk right there while you're doing this stuff. Great. Uh, okay, I have temporarily misplaced my agenda on my screen here. What comes after coastal resources?
Historic.
Ah, all right, and we did that. That's all done. Any, anything that we need to chat on that about, Rich, or we're good?
I think we're good.
Okay, great. While I'm still finding it, oh, here we go. Natural Resources is still in progress. Anything we want to talk about as a group in terms of needed items or logistics for that?
A- as I had mentioned to you before, Art wanted to update the the Natural Resources Commission's Open Space Plan. As I said, I don't, I probably won't get to actually doing the updating that plan because I've got to do this. But we're gonna take what he's suggesting. But I don't even know, I think we have to update the table that's in our P O C D, so if we're gonna continue to include that table, he wants to renumber the the ranking schema. So taking water quality from a five to a ten, that was the only change. So I figured I can do that at the, within the P O C D. I don't, at the same time, if the document itself isn't technically updated, do we make the change? Or do we make the change in the P O C D with a note saying due to COVID nineteen and whatever?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about the potential for having some placeholder in here due to our abbreviated timeline. So I would be comfortable making that note if we feel like we are going to file another update in two thousand twenty-one as we discussed possibly doing. And I think that happened with the Open Space Plan last time too, which is why our clock was set to two thousand and not nineteen ninety-nine, right?
I think so, something like that. And but with his, I mean, at the same time, looking at the section, I don't necessarily wouldn't change it.
Okay.
I mean, the recommendations are still, we want the first right of refusal.
Yep.
And this is the priority of the land that we've identified now. That, a- as I said to Michelle, a natural resources could go back and actually continue to do some further investigation because there's still some large parcels of significant acreage within some of these watersheds that I didn't understand why they weren't chosen versus some that were. So, and it, you know, Art's response was, well, we didn't want to blanket the whole town with yellow. And I understand that, but, you know, we're drilling down to the watershed level of planning and so if we're, you know, certainly when you have, you're looking at protecting headwaters, it made sense to me, Lily, that you got a forty acre piece here that could be bought and you're protecting, you're suggesting we protect the one across the street. You know, so I think they do, they could do some of that work. But short of that, I think the plan is good as is. And I know some of Rosemary's students made some recommendations, right, right? I think someone, so we can incorporate.
If you want to put the open space thing up, I know that you're working on it too. If you want to maybe share that document with me, I can put the student recommendations in, like, I'm happy to put some things in there. I just can't do the whole thing by myself.
Right, I, my plan was literally work on that section tomorrow. And I've got to do two maps for the transportation section and get working on that and finish up economic development. And I think I can manage most of that tomorrow.
Okay, I'm gonna work on clean energy tomorrow and yeah, we can just share the document together and I can try to put in whatever I can and, yeah, get my student stuff in there and we can
Okay.
collaborate. Great.
I'm gonna be locked in the office, no distractions.
That's fine. Okay, so that takes care of natural resources. So Gary, though, I'll I'll write the update for natural resources for your review. You're working on open space with Art and Rosemary. That covers that as kind of related but separate sections. Residential development, we already discussed in this, at a previous meeting, and that's all set. And I do have commercial and industrial development to review tonight, but Kirk, do you want to go through one of your sections instead so that you can have a turn talking and I can have a break?
Yeah, I think you need a glass of water.
Yeah.
You're talking a bit.
I'm happy to screen share and pull up whichever section you'd like to go through.
You want to, you want to drive the screen share part?
You can or I can. If you have it up, take it. But I have it here too.
Oh, you, it doesn't matter. I I can, I can try.
All right, good, you drive.
Let me see if I can get it open. So you want me to do emergency services?
Whatever one you want to do that's ready for tonight.
Okay, let's do emergency services. I'm gonna try to share the document. Emergency Services was an interesting one and I learned a lot about excuse me, the way the town is doing emergency services, okay? Host disabled participant screen sharing. So apparently somebody has to enable me to screen share.
Gary, can you make him a co-host?
So then I, what do I do? Do I maximize the guy that I want here?
Yep.
Okay. Probably want to zoom in a little bit.
Well, we have a minute. At, in the middle of section five, five point three is land and water resource management. I'm just wondering and I'm reading it, it kind of talks about clean and adequate supplies of water and I'm wondering if it's in the wrong. I mean, it belongs in this section, but it overlaps with water sewer a little bit.
All right, I will take a close look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, does everybody see my?
introductory paragraph.
Perfect.
Yeah, there's a bunch of yellow in there. And we'll talk about that. So the previous P O C D had just some general descriptions about the services that were available in a town. And I tried to carry those forward. And I tried to get them updated to what the current staffing levels and administrative duties are. But I was not successful to get anything from the chief. Regarding that, I I had sent an email asking for his input on this. And I didn't see anything back, so I'm leaving it as yellow with big question marks around the sections that I didn't have availability to the information regarding the staffing and call volume at the various police and fire stations. I just carried like a very brief description about when they were founded and where they're located. I briefly touch on the public safety building. I didn't really know what to say about this one, given that there's such uncertainty about what the plans are for the public safety building. So I think I was talking to Mark Salerno a little bit and I'm gonna continue talking to him about a lot of the things like in this section and even in the transportation section or in probably even some of the other sections that you guys have been working on. We're gonna need more input and I've I think I'll just leave that as it is there with the yellow and a statement that we could, we could use some help getting the correct information for those kind of things.
Yeah, I can take, I'll take that Kirk and I'll just, I'll shoot that over Julie Wilson and see if she can't get me those numbers.
Somebody out there has the answers to this, I'm sure of it. It's just getting that right person to to help us.
I used to be able to call the fire marshal and they had all those numbers for me, so.
Right.
Louise over there, I'll, I'll contact her and get that.
Okay, so that was the top part, talking about the different the police force and fire department facilities and background a little bit. And then I go on to say some words about where I got the information or where I got the ideas related to recommendations. I just called out the the two thousand sixteen fire department study. Two thousand seventeen C C O G Hazard mitigation plan annex. Both of those documents are over two hundred and seventy-five pages. So I did my best to read through those and pull and pluck out the important and relevant things and I would be very surprised if I got all of them, to be honest with everybody. So again, I'm hoping as we push this document forward and people see things and know and remember and like whatever, as it's getting reviewed, I hope some of those details are brought brought forward for inclusion. Because there is quite a, quite a bit of material out there. And, you know, given, given my amount of free time I read as much as I could and jumped directly to the recommendations in a lot of spots. We had some discussions with Chief Finkelstein in Gary's office, which were very helpful. Out of that, Gary wrote a really nice summary of the ideas that we talked about. Gary, you'll see in here that those are all in there. I just mismatched them up and tried to weave in as many of the other places where they referenced the same ideas as that discussion. So that's that's where mainly I got the ideas from, was from the C C O G Hazard mitigation plan discussion with Chief Finkelstein and the fire department study. So on to the recommendations. One recommendation we talked a bit about with Chief Finkelstein and it's a improve I T infrastructure, including but not limited to a centrally managed system, I E video cameras, radios, G I S maps, internet and fiber optic network, mobile devices, just like a, this, this, this is kind of all, one of those all encompassing recommendations that said, you know, we need to embrace technology and make some investments and do things smartly. I don't know that my words that I have heard for that recommendation fully explain and if and if, and if, if, if anyone feels like these, these should be expanded on or like background material given, please, you know, jump in and say, you know, we, we, you should explain that a little bit more. So that was the first one. And the second one is a continued collaboration between emergency services dispatch and Department of Public Works regarding things like flooded roadways. This is, you know, as, as everybody is talking about becoming more and more important with the increasing storms that that we're seeing. So that's number two. Three, as development. As development and population growth effect and the effects of climate change become apparent, the town is recommended to consider the size of its police force, the fire department and emergency medical services. In addition, it's recommended to study trends in call volume since the adoption of the independent police force in two thousand seventeen. I go on even further here to break that down a little bit. And I don't know, there was some discussion back and forth on whether or not to include this, the current staffing levels, but I think it's important. So I said, we came out with the number that said there's one point six officers per one thousand and the industry standard is two point two. So I'm kind of hinting to the fact that we may want to consider adding staff for the police. Then I go on to section three point two where I'm talking about EMS and firefighter volunteerism. Trends need to be evaluated. It's recommended to determine whether to increase the number of volunteers or to hire more, more full-time EMS and fire department staff. And I go on to quote some statistic that says that there's one point six seven firefighters per one thousand. some statistic that says that there's one point six seven firefighters per one thousand. Is the current standard. And I did not have an answer to how many people or how many firefighters we have in town. This actually probably should be highlighted.
Kirk, do you think we could source these stats? Or were they provided by Finkelstein?
You're, you're, you're a hundred percent accurate to say that we need to tie this to some document. So yeah, I agree with that. I pulled, I pulled I'm not sure where I got the one point six number from. The two point two officers per one thousand, that's a nationally published figure. And then this other, this other one here, I got from a study that was done by the How about if I, how about if I, it's, it's in the, it's in the resources below. I can take another pass at this. And yeah, I agree with your comment to say we should kind of reference where the information is coming from. That was the other one of the things that I kind of struggled with a little bit. Given that I had so many different places to pull information from. I didn't know what standard we were documenting our sources to. And I didn't pay a lot of attention to the documenting of sources, so.
No judgment.
Yeah, well, I didn't figure we would come under. I'll, I'll take another pass at that. So recommendation, I should probably be asking if anyone had comments or whatever on the first couple. I just kind of been jumping through and if, and if I, if you have comments, please continue to speak up. Don't be afraid to interrupt me. Item number four was to promote regionalization. This came out of both a hazardous mitigation annex and conversations. I, I think we talked about this with Chief Finkelstein. Gary, do we?
We did a little bit. Things that we share, yeah.
So, right, and regional recommendations include promoting, to promote the ability to share underutilized or specialized resources. Promote access to specialized training. Promote access to sharing, regional sharing of information, promote strategic positioning of emergency equipment. Promote resilience in the type and quality of services available by drawing from a larger pool of talent, talent in the wider region. This one, I believe I took from the two thousand seventeen police department or fire department study. That same study also led to recommendation number five, long-term vehicle acquisition for fire trucks, ambulances and turnout gear. I might have some random capitalization in here. Hopefully, hopefully somebody who's a good editor can help clean up some of the fine points.
You've got proofing built into the timeline-ish, so this is good. We'll get it.
Okay, so that one, I know the long-term acquisition, I'm pretty sure that came out of the firefighter study. Number six, pursue grant funding opportunities for vehicle I T and necessary life savings slash rescue equipment through D E H M S. I'm pretty sure. Yeah, I'll have to look to see which document this one came out of, but that was a recommendation.
Can you put a note thereafter, D E Dennis, to spell it out? Just type in print in yellow. I'll make sure it gets spelt out.
So there's, there's financial implications to the both six and seven. I don't know if we want to go into or how, how you want to characterize that. I think some more wording there or better wording might be important because this, this is the funding part is both a financial and a planning, you know, issue.
I, I think in terms of a professional grant writer, I mean, that's applicable to almost anything across the board. So like, that's a great recommendation as a general one.
I agree with that too.
I don't know where it fits, but.
Talked about putting it in education and outreach. To sum up as a for it. Yeah, I think that'd be really good.
So honestly, and I feel like it does have like a, a P O C D wide.
I would maybe just edit this to say pursue state and federal grants relating to police firefighting EMS acquisition.
Pursue grant rating for.
Pursue grant funding.
So it says, it says pursue. Not there. You're on number six.
Pursue instead of hire.
Right. You might actually, you actually get rid of writer and if you put writer in the other section. Make that plural grants.
I'll go back and fix this. So we want this one up here, number six to be for the writer and number seven to be for funding.
The writer doesn't need to go in here. We'll cover the writer for the whole P O C D as a blanket recommendation applying to all sections in the education and outreach chapter.
Okay, that sounds good.
And probably it should be like education outreach and implementation or something like that, but yeah. That sounds good.
So we're happy with six then? Minus the spelling out. We're happy with seven? Okay, number eight was to identify and remediate where possible low-lying lands, roads instructor, so, so set structures susceptible to storm surge and flooding. This was, this is kind of like a placeholder here. It kind of is a reference also to a couple of other sections where we're, we want to like call out and make it known similar to an outreach or training kind of thing. We want to make it known where flooded roadways are so they can be fixed. Maybe through a map. And that was one of the things that in the transportation section that I was looking for when I was asking about Gary had, since Gary is really, really good with the G I S mapping. I'm sure that he probably already has maps that talk about these things anyway. The flood prone, prone structures and the flood prone roadways. Those, those maps, I think, could go either here or in the transportation section or we I don't, I don't know. Maybe just say in here, we've referenced the other one.
I mean, you can, you can put them in both places. I mean, because you're gonna be, you'd be referencing them in two different contexts.
Right. So number nine was an interesting one and I don't know, this one, this one I just kind of like I didn't pull it from any of the other ones and maybe you guys can rein me in or, or help me understand if this is a good idea or not. This may already exist. It probably should exist. And it, the idea, I'm just, I'll just read it first and then I'll then if we have questions. Develop and or refine a reason, regionalized unified hazard slash resource matrix. Such a matrix would show hazards and resources of the region and clarify who and what are best equipped for specific types of emergency. Probably say emergencies. Matrix, the matrix should include quantity and type of facilities available, who owns them. And it should be versus the known hazards. And I said table two point one critical facilities from the East Line Hazard Annex. Should be expanded to include all known hazards and resources. So my idea with this one is like from a planning point of view and it might actually be I might be, I might be reaching a little far into the, you know, inner workings of telling how EMS and police and the firefighters how to, how to plan for stuff. But the idea for me, when I was thinking about this is like, we know that we know that we get hurricanes that draw, that have giant storm surge. We know that we get flooding that floods out roads inland. We know that hurricanes blow trees over, knock down power lines. All these different scenarios require different types of equipment and different types of expertise to, you know, combat them. So that's what the idea of this one is, is to get everybody together, all the different emergency services groups, police, fire, all them. And get them to like, you know, in some cases they could share equipment for certain things. I don't know. But from a planning point of view, if each one of these each one of these groups went and bought the same type of equipment, then we have three of them, but we only need one because they could share it kind of thing. So that was, that was my idea about the matrix. I don't know if it's worded correctly or if it's something that we even want to keep in here.
I think it makes sense. It reads like you're leaning toward essentially what other organizations would call like an enterprise risk management.
Right.
Effort. And I feel like that does extend in terms of your concern about scope and you know, whether or not it should be in this plan. I mean, it does extend to beyond emergency services to other governmental functions, boards and commissions.
Right. And I'm thinking like even health, health, you know, health implications, you know.
Right, like if we had something on here that was like hazard pandemic. Right? And we knew what our resources were that we needed to activate in a pandemic.
Right, exactly. That's the kind of thing I'm trying to, you know, it's not, it's not so much me wanting to tell them how, what to do. It's just me trying to say, okay, we have all these different groups and we have all these different resources and we have all these different risks. It'd be nice to know that everybody's working together and if they had a common place to kind of catalog and, you know, visually say, okay, well, we don't have X's in this, you know, in these blocks. Who does? We call if there was a I don't know.
Yeah, it's just knowing where your resources. We don't currently have one, so I think it's a great recommendation.
I do too. I think you can even flesh it out a little bit more. Something that you just said can be in writing.
Yeah, I, it was good to talk that through and try to remember what I said.
Think they can make an app. That would make a great app.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's the computer science side of my brain coming through, trying to take the, the one-size-fits-all approach. So that was number nine. Number ten was so we have these other documents. One of them's the fire department study. And the fire department study had twenty-one recommendations in them, in it. I included it in the bottom of here as a table. I cleaned it up a little bit and I included it in the bottom and number ten just says generally support the recommendations of the two thousand seventeen fire department study, which has twenty-one recommendations. I go on to say many of these recommendations refer to internal business of the fire department. Others should be known at the planning commission level. The table in appendix, whatever, I I don't know what the number is yet. The table in the appendix X includes designation of how each recommendation is related to the P O C D and the page number from the report where the recommendation is discussed. So they have a lot of really good recommendations in their thing that I, in their, in their fire department study that I feel like shouldn't get lost. It was a quite a, quite a interesting report. And it does get into some good details that I think are important. So I, my, my idea was to just say, let's not forget about what their recommendations are. Number eleven, generally support all the recommendations from the hazard mitigation annex. Same idea. There was a lot of really good work done, a lot of really good recommendations. And I'm just saying generally support all of those recommendations. Then I say, this document has many recommendations for improving resiliency at the local level. That was one of the things that I know we're required to address resiliency throughout our, our thing and I was this might be a feeble attempt at doing that, but it's an attempt to get some resiliency items in here. Cause if you read that hazard mitigation annex, it is all about storm preparation or storm management and basically weather, weather hazards and how to deal with emergencies, which is key for resiliency. So I just said generally support those. Number twelve. Continue to identify and mitigate energy security risks by planning. Planning for emergency power, planning emergency power for critical facilities such as communication systems, healthcare facilities and water pumping stations. So I think that one's okay. Number thirteen, continue to identify and mitigate security risks associated with potable water, fire extinguishing water and wastewater by planning for water main breaks, water contamination events and high volume demand for fire extinguishing water. That one, I'm, that, that idea came from the fire department study. And they called out some deficiencies which may or may not have been corrected. And those deficiencies were like there's some, some issue in certain parts of town and I, if anyone's interested, I can find out exactly what they are, but they call out issues where there's not enough firefighting water volume available in a lot of parts of town and that's even including where there's fire hydrants. So that's one part of it. And then the potable water, I think there was an issue or contamination like not, not exactly the same thing as the chemical contamination that, that you guys were talking about earlier, but no, if there was an E coli or something, who knows?
Yeah, certainly a main break could cause.
Right. So I, I figured I'd throw that in there. Number fourteen, continue to identify and mitigate risks associated with public health issues such as global pandemics and opioid crisis and hunger. I didn't see anything in our existing plans that talked about those kind of things. So given that we're in the middle of two, if not three of these things I just mentioned. I think it's important to put something like that. The wording, I don't know, maybe if, maybe we can change the wording of it. But I thought it was important to put in. Uh, and number 15. This may be somewhat redundant to 13.
I was gonna ask you, Kirk, does, is 13 kind of suggest like the, the, like coverage, like fire coverage? Is that, would a risk be the lack of available water? Right? So if we didn't have, say, a dry hydrant available or?
Right. That's what numbers, that, number 15, let's, let's, let's get back to what you said in a second. Number 15. All new developments should provide water for firefighting fires. Firewater is not available in all parts of town and certain portions of existing water mains lack sufficient flow. Flow volume as detailed in the 2017. Fire department study. So I think you're right, Gary, that.
That, that answers it.
I may not. I don't know if, I don't know if I want to include firewater up here.
Extinguishing water?
Yeah, I don't know if I want to put it here because that's.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think they're, you're treating them now as two separate things. One, that's more a public health and, and one that's a public safety.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I'm gonna clean this up.
That's not a bad, I guess what I'm referring to is every now and then if the fire department fights a fire and depending on what happens, sometimes there's some backflow and it'll inundate houses. So I think that, I think that's what that was kind of suggesting as I read it, but.
Uh, 13?
Like protect against that backflow contamination problem.
Yeah. So water contamination events could be
While you're.
Things that are already mentioned like water main breaks, but it also could be backflow from firefighting. Or low pressure from firefighting can also cause water contamination issues.
That, that's how I was interpreting that, but.
Got it.
I don't know. Is that?
Yeah.
You can read interpretation. I don't know. I'm not. Definitely a security risk.
I think you've got the main thing there. It's just to wordsmith.
Yeah, the wording. I think there's two different ideas here. The, the firefighting water as it deals in reference to like a contamination event due to the backflow. That's one thing because it's a public or a, or a health issue is more what 13 should be, I think. And then 15, I think.
Provide protection.
Is, yeah. And one of the things that they called out specifically from that fire department study was the lack of firefighting water. Either through fire hydrants, a dry well or wet well or what, uh, I'm not sure exactly what you call them. The other thing where you take it from a pond or a water body.
Well, I, I'd like to run that by Brad.
Yeah, me too.
Well, there's implications for 15 as far as wetlands too. So.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, if you start sucking the water out of, uh, Gordon Pond, it probably wouldn't be a big deal because you could take a lot before somebody noticed, but there's other places in town. People would get mad. So there's definitely a tie in and they call out, the fire department study calls out the lack of firefighting water as an issue. And I think that, um, I think that noting the dependence of that to the implications in, um, like maybe a wetlands or a coastal environment. I think making that tie in might be interesting.
Yeah. I thought it was like an opportunity for a regionalization argument as well in terms of increased access to water tanks, supply through tanks.
I mean, a good example is, uh, the Farm Meadow subdivision. This is the one that's adjacent to the solar farm. That was approved with a cistern because they just, they didn't, even though there was a wetland, there was a pond at the base of that, that they could have dropped a pipe in, right? And to all will pull the water from that, but obviously they, they didn't. And wetlands wouldn't approve that, but so they had to install the cistern at the top of the hill.
I bet that cost them a lot of money.
Probably less than wanting the water main out there.
Yeah, because there was no, no public water out there anyway. The question is, where are they gonna get water for fire protection? They put in a duct, the cistern instead.
So then I go on, here's my references and then here's that table with the 21. I don't, I didn't know whether or not we really wanted to keep all 21 of these around. I put it in there. I don't know. We could take it out. It doesn't really matter. I saw this as an opportunity to get the word resilience into our plan. I think we give points for that or something. I don't know.
I think it's fine to keep it all in. I'd keep it.
Okay.
We were talking about listing the recommendations in the other section, so maybe this is, you know.
Yeah. Equivalent. I agree. Nice job, Kirk.
Thank you.
You, Kirk.
Yep, thanks. And, uh, I'm gonna clean this up a bit and it's there on the, it's there in the folder on the active files.
Great.
Thanks.
Um, okay.
But I think the only thing I would need from you, Kirk, on that section, if you want me to touch it or not touch it, but was just the sourcing of those numbers. And if you want, I'll run that by, like I said, Julie Wilson, unless you're, you wanted to do that, but.
I would be happy to get help from.
Perfect.
Them. If, and, and if I knew who to ask, I would have asked them.
Right, right. No, I'm just saying I can, I'll take, like I said, I'll do that tomorrow. Just wanna make sure.
That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Great. Alright, so, um, I was doing a little bit of calculation here. So I know it's coming up at nine thirty. I want to be respectful of everyone's time. I also have some concerns because we have seven more sections that still require our review, not that are all done tonight, but in total by the time we wanted to complete the sections July 24th. It's taking us about two to three sections per meeting at the pace that we're currently going at, which I think is actually pretty reasonable to make sure that everybody is comfortable with all of the recommendations. But I'd love some feedback on, one, whether we want to continue tonight. Two, if we don't, we need to get some extra meetings scheduled so that we can bang these things out. And three, if there are, uh, process improvements to the review process that you want to recommend that, uh, may make our review a little bit more time efficient. Certainly open to those. I think that the, I find these conversations really interesting and I'm getting a lot out of them. And I think that we're really making some good fine tuning to the recommendations, but if others feel that the process is too slow, I'm certainly understand that view too.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Um, I think we, I was really bad at reading all of them today, but in the future I could try to be better and maybe I could. Or we could put some comments next to things that we think need to be like addressed in the meeting, because I think that there are probably all of them, like tonight, we're like, yep, 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 yep. And there are only a couple where we're like, hmm, I'm not sure. So I think that maybe for the next meeting, if we all were able to read them beforehand, drop a note into the shared document of anything that we just are not fully supportive of or have a question about. And then discuss only those points during the meeting. I think that could help streamline everything pretty aggressively. Cause I think that mostly we're in agreement. And then maybe just at the start of each section, just like we all read them again and then just say anybody having, I don't know. These are just ideas. Yeah, makes sense.
Absolutely. I mean, it's like, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm good with that. That works with you all.
I don't mind talking through this stuff and I agree, I agree, putting footnotes in and, and having those is a good idea, definitely. But I think going through recommendations, I feel like is, is I, I feel like it's useful.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the other thing, it's all now public record, which is helpful in our, uh, desire to be transparent.
Right. And, um, as far as, I can keep going tonight too. I might want to take like a five, 10 minute break, but I don't mind keep going for a little while.
I'm gonna have to stop tonight. But I'm gonna work on clean energy tomorrow and I can work on open space with Gary. Gary, have you created a Word doc for open space yet? Cause maybe if you have not, I could start to get like a shell up or where are you with that?
Um, I'm, I'm, I need to create that. So what I
Okay.
I was gonna go in and just take the pieces out of the P O C D and, and start doing that.
Okay.
You wanted it, but that, that's where I was gonna go with it and.
Sure.
Start there. I mean.
I would say start with something like
Yeah.
Borrow from somewhere. Like steal, steal a bunch of stuff out of, don't we have an open space plan as part of another?
And then we also have a Niantic River watershed, um, like community group. Focus group type thing too, that we can plug in there as well. It was done really recently, just this past spring.
Well, their plan, Rosemary, is in our, um, uh, data folder. They are, they had already drafted it, but had some edits and planned to approve it at their August meeting. And it details out the open space recommendation.
Excellent. That's awesome. Okay. That's really good to know. Um. Yeah. So if I sign off, I think those are things and work on clean energy, open space with Gary and, um, also um, my students changes. I can, I think the waste one, Michelle and I talked about today. Michelle, if you want to tag team the waste.
I've got that.
Um, I can plug in their stuff or whatever is easiest for you. And then, um, I think I'll revisit the methods at some point. Maybe we can, I think we already approved those, didn't we? And we were talking about those a long time ago.
We did, but so like, I know you have a lot on your plate just for this and outside of here. So don't feel pressured to
Yo.
Overcommit because so like, you know.
Well, I'll do clean energy. I'll work on open space with Gary. And then if you want a hand with putting my students waste thing into that document, let me.
They're all, they're all saved in the drive. I had just forgotten when it was time to, so I'll add them into the existing sections too.
For green energy, uh, we had Lily Freiberg. I think, I think it's in the folder on Google Drive. She did a whole report. Uh, several years.
Excellent. Oh my God. Okay, good.
She was an intern. Uh, so you could take a look at that report. Cause it's a few years old. I don't know how relevant it still is. I think it probably is.
I bet it's still pretty relevant. That sounds great. That's huge help. Thank you.
If it, if it's not in there, just let me know. I, I have a hard.
Can you email it to me right now? Do you have it?
Uh, I have the hard copy. I can scan it and then email it to you tonight.
Michelle, are you seeing if it's in there?
I'm looking right now.
You're looking now, okay. Cause that would be great. Cause I plan on working on that tomorrow afternoon. Yay. Plan of constant something, P O C D.
Oh, we could come up with some good ones.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll just write those, like a whole bunch of like alternative names we, uh, came up with during our like four hour long meetings.
It's not in the drive. So Gary, if you could send that over to Rosemary.
Yeah, okay.
And then we can get it in there too, if you're scanning it.
Cool.
Alright, um, so Rosemary signing off. Rich and Norm, do you want to stay on or call it a night?
Up to you guys.
Another half an hour I can make.
I think we can crank through one more.
You guys are strong.
Alright, let's, uh.
Guys, I'll talk to you soon.
Thank you. Okay, so let's see what we've still got here that's ready. Um. Commercial's ready. Uh, that could be a bit of a long one. Wastewater and water is ready and transportation is ready. Um, and the rest are either finished or not yet ready. Any?
Talk about some of them, uh, for transportation, but, or do you still want to work on that, Gary?
Yeah, well, I would just add that I'm, I'm working on the maps to get inserted. Uh, that ones that Kirk had highlighted there as figures. And then all I really wanted to do was add in the recommendations that Wendy had kind of given us tonight, that let's incorporate arts and culture into it. So that's really all.
Hold on that one then, or you want to look at what's there, knowing that we approve of what's coming?
I'd be in favor of that. Then we're done.
Okay, great. I'll pull it up or yeah, I can. Got it here in, oh no, Kirk, you have it too. You.
I do too.
Yeah. You drive.
Yeah. Alright, uh, let me.
While you're pulling it up, just for everybody else's benefit, I will, um, make sure, uh, the links are out so we can add comments to, you know, improve our discussion for the next meeting. And the documents still to review.
Sorry.
Let's just step out for a second, scan that document.
Okay. Well, Gary's already seen this, so I'm just gonna start in here. I pretty much took. I pretty, I pretty much took, um, what was existing in the transportation section and started with that, uh, from the previous P O C D. How's that? You guys see that?
Looks good.
Okay. Um, so I'll leave that for your reading pleasure later. It pretty much says almost identically what to what, um, to what it did before, at least for some of these definitions, the key facts about the roadway infrastructure. Uh, there's, I did not look at the Yale design report recently. Uh, I did look a little bit at the regional P O C D. And I definitely looked a lot at the C cog bike and pedestrian plan. Um, if you're familiar with that one, you'll see a lot of those recommendations. Actually, I think I got them all from the bike and pedestrian plan. Oh, I didn't, on the last section, I didn't state what the goal was, but, um, we, we, here's the goals for the transportation section. Goal number one, ensure that infrastructure systems are safe, efficient, modally balanced, environmentally sensitive and will support economic development. Goal two, strive to minimize reliance on automobiles, depend and dependency on, on the road network through increased use of alternative modes of transportation. Uh, buses, pedestrian sidewalks, uh, crosswalks, bikeways and a commuter rail stop. I think we decided we're not gonna do the commuter rail stop because that's just not really gonna happen. Uh, there's some nice words in here about the, we expect the residential development to continue. Um, description of the roads. This is where Gary's gonna what, one of the things that, um, I did as part of this project was to go onto Google Earth and try to put in all the stuff and get images out of Google Earth. I did a lot of map notations on Google Earth. I shared a link with some of you about Google Earth. If you get some time, it's kind of fun to, to click around in there. It's pretty, Google Earth is pretty neat. A lot of the pictures that I, and, and diagrams that I put in here came from Google Earth. Um, goes on to talk about state maintained roads. Um, goes on to talk about state maintained roads. Gary's putting in a figure here. The state of Connecticut, uh, the state of Connecticut and the University of Connecticut worked together to maintain a crash database. This here is a map that I made on, uh, using Google. And it, what it's, it's a heat map showing the number of accidents. Um, by geographic area, you can see a real red area by I-95 and uh, Route 161. And you can see all the major thoroughfares have a green or a red line indicating or green or red marking coloring scheme showing how many accidents have occurred in that particular area. This is just the generalized accidents. I have another one that I wasn't really sure if I wanted to put in there. Uh, and it was a heat map of the fatalities in town related to transportation. Um, I don't know. It's an interesting map and it, the other, the fatalities one has where you would, where you would expect to see a lot of uh, fatalities along the I-95. But one of the other places that it showed was around the Gordon Pond on 161. There's a red spot there where it gets really narrow and I debated on how to use that information. I uh, may bring it in here at some point. I don't know. I think, I think I'm just gonna leave it out.
Oh, see, I think it's worth including because I know how many times in our discussions over the last couple of years that has come up.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of, um, vehicular safety, but also pedestrian safety in that area is a, has come up a few times to our commission.
Yep, absolutely. And I just, it's a sensitive topic because for me, like, I think about it and I think about somebody died right there.
Right.
You know, so it's kind of like, you know, I.
Yeah, I, you know.
It's a tough thing and I, you wanna use that information for a good thing, but you don't wanna, I don't know.
I totally understand what you're saying.
So.
Agree.
Based on, uh, uh, so the recommendations, it, it, there's a bunch of words at the top that talks about the description of the town roads. And then I jump right into, uh, recommendations. And these are general recommendations. And number one is continue to emphasize East Line is the gateway to southeastern Connecticut over the next 10 years. I don't know. This is kinda one of those marketing, uh, things that, um, we kinda alluded to a little bit when we were talking about the arts. Uh, number two, encourage traffic access management techniques along Route 161. I think I wanna take out the route. Well. Now, I'm just gonna. Okay, so, so I'm saying encourage traffic management techniques along Route 161. There's a need to institute traffic access management techniques to control the number of curb cuts. We've heard this in other sections. The curb cuts allowing access to and from commercial properties, frequent access points as seen on Route 161. Inert traffic flow and cause congestion, increased commercial development will only accentuate this problem. The following methods are recommended. And it goes down a list. Again, I probably need to footnote these. I did steal them from somewhere and some of them existed in the previous P O C D. Um, require that developments or redevelopment of commercial properties are designed to encourage opportunities for shared access points between adjoining properties. Limit parking lot entrances and realign them with terminating streets, not non-main streets or other parking lot entrances. This will reduce the number of cross-traffic turning areas and should make parking lot entrances more visible to drivers. Require that developers install curb cuts between adjoining lots. Between adjoining lots near the rear portion of the onsite parking area to encourage interlot access without use of arterial roadways. Interlot access should be, should continue to be encouraged, especially on long Route 161. Uh, I think those came out of the previous P O C D.
They did, and I also echoed them in different words in the commercial development section. So it's great that they support each other, uh, cause they're, they're very similar.
Yeah, it's, and important.
Yeah.
Uh, number three, evaluate the need to implement Koffic trim traffic calming techniques and investigate forming a traffic calming process for the town. Uh, this thought was kinda sparked by the previous P O C D had a nice figure in it. It was a dog bone traffic calming figure. Uh, so that's kind of that's where this came from. Uh, traffic calming is a method by which road design is altered to encourage drivers to slow down and allow pedestrians to negotiate crosswalks more easily. While all commercial areas within East Line require installation of traffic calming techniques, downtown Niantic has been identified as a critical area. Several means of traffic calming are available. I, this is also what I was talking about earlier, um, with the arts tie-in. A lot of the arts she mentioned have a traffic calming component to adding art to whatever the environment is. Um, so I feel like, I feel like I wanna add to this or Gary, if you wanna take a crack at adding the arts portions where you think it's appropriate. I know, like I said, I took it out of the top, but maybe put it back in and, um, maybe get some really nice, modern, modern, like streetscape art or something. I don't know. Maybe, maybe even showcase the area in downtown Niantic. I can get a street view picture. That would be a nice, a nice picture to put in right here. I know Google Earth, you'll see a lot of the pictures from Google Earth. I could easily put one of those in here from the streetscape. And, uh, I don't know. I think this would be a good spot to, to talk about, um, uh, the traffic calming stuff and put a picture.
Okay, yeah. When I get this stuff, I'll talk to Wendy and then we can maybe insert it right there.
Yep. Yep, and, and, and the evaluation is to also come up with the traffic, traffic calming process for the town. Uh. Several means of calming traffic are available narrowing the lanes to encourage automobiles to drive slowly or install street trees to provide the illusion of narrower lanes. Formalized parallel parking on both sides of the street. To better identify areas of parking from the travel lane and to provide a buffer for pedestrians uh, from moving automobiles. Install speed bumps and key areas to slow traffic. I know a lot of people won't like that one, but I would, I put it in there because I feel like if you drive through downtown Niantic, going anything more than 20 miles an hour in the middle of the summer is dangerous, just because of you got people, you know, not paying attention, pulling their beach buggy, uh, yelling at their kids on their cellphone at the same time. So downtown Niantic, I feel like would benefit from some traffic calming, especially during the summer. And I talk about that again below. Um, install corner bulb outs. This was, uh, also, this is a technique that's used. They, they flare out the, uh, at the end of the road where there's an intersection, they flare out the sidewalks uh, to make it so that there's, um, the pedestrians can come out past and look like down the street past where all the cars will be parked. There's a picture of it here. So I found this, this, this came from, I don't remember the exact name of the document. It's in the resources below. So it's just a picture of the bulb outs. You could see the crosswalk square in the middle and, um, the flare outs that, that on either side, there would be, uh, parallel parking down all four of these roads here. Um. And then again, here we have a flare out above, uh, mid-block sidewalk bulb out. Uh, there would be parallel parking on either side. I looked for these figures. Um, it's kind of, you know, we, we could have put any figures in for these two. I just picked these as examples. Uh, Gary, if you feel like there's a better example of these, or if you feel like, um, there's a better idea about, uh, flare outs and, uh, bulb outs. By all means, uh, have at it.
No, I think those were good, good examples.
Okay. So then I go on to talk about, uh, state roads. Well, I, I stole this from the, the main P O C D. We talk about state roads here. Uh, and they go through the process of how state roads are, um, updated and I guess as a town, we, we're not really allowed to make alterations to state roads or maybe just, it's just a funding thing. I'm not sure.
With the exception of our crosswalks in our downtown. Kind of a unique arrangement. So again, in terms of a transportation recommendation, we could continue to foster that relationship with D O T. So that we can enhance our streetscape.
Yep. I, uh, you know, we should, that's actually a good point and I don't know where to put it in here, but, um, it should be noted that we, it should be a thing, like that should be like a coordination committee with the state or something. We, we need to develop that because like a lot of the, there, there's, there's some important things here. When we're talking about state roads, okay? Um, 161 is a state road and 156 are state roads. And below here, I talk about those and one, and point out the things that, um, are a hazard. Okay, so what, recommendation number four, provide for a traffic study and an engineering program to establish current traffic patterns, estimate how upgraded or new roads might be configured to handle current and future traffic flow. This is kind of a reference to the traffic study that, uh, Gary's talked about in the past. Um, and it goes on to say the state currently has a project in the works to perform, perform a study of I-95 usage. And a town study should be correlated with this project using data related to traffic exiting I-95 and coming into East Line. Um. So that study is still pending?
Well, I, I think in terms of that paragraph.
Yeah.
The study that I had referred to was very specific, cause it was gonna just evaluate the 161 corridor from the approximately the high school to 156.
Yeah.
This suggests that it'd be a complete traffic study that would be done and evaluate all of town.
Right.
So, I mean, and I'm fine with that. I think that, that's just a very costly endeavor.
If we could get the state to do it, I mean, it's.
Well, I think that's gonna be in terms of really analyzing our traffic. That's gonna fall, I think, on our backs a little bit more.
Right.
But.
Uh.
We can get money from the state to fund it.
That would be really great. Sorry, I somehow got, um, back onto the wrong one. Okay, alright. So Gary, if you wanna make some changes to that one.
Okay, I can massage it a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, number five, widen Route 161 and mark lanes on pavement at the intersections of Roxbury Road and East Patagansett. Mark one, mark Route 161 going north for a left turn at both intersections. Uh, so. The original, I think this was already, this was, this one here.
That comes out of the existing P O C.
It came out of the existing one. However, the, the existing one had it so that they would have wanted a right-hand turn lane as you're going south. And I don't know that you're gonna see, I don't know that that would be as much of a benefit as going north having a left turn lane. Because that road is only, it looks, from what I could tell, that you're not gonna get four lanes in there. You could get three lanes. And, and my, my thought was, if you're gonna put a lane, a turning lane in, it should be at the uh, turning left, cause you don't have the right of way.
Right.
That's, that was my thinking with changing that one. We can massage that, uh, but I, and I do like the idea of reconfiguring those two, uh, intersections. I.
Wasn't East Patagansett already reconfigured after the 2009 P O C D? Remember it used to be like a, a Y turn where you kind of could take the right before the light? And they cornered off that section on you're, you're going south on 161.
That was done around 1995.
Wasn't that long ago?
Yeah.
Right. Maybe.
So.
What the, and, and yeah, it, this whole, this whole area was redone. Let me, let me try to zoom in a little bit better.
That was done in conjunction with Chapman Farms.
Yep. So the idea here, I don't know if you can still see this yet. Uh, I'm trying to make it bigger. So my, where my mouse is, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is we make a turn lane that goes right here. Where I'm moving my mouse around.
Okay.
And it would be a left turn to come on to East Patagansett. And again, the same kind of idea here on Roxbury Road. The recommendation as it read before was to make this a turn lane, which there's not one there now.
Right.
At, at Roxbury. There is a turn lane here. My point is, um, uh, if you're making a right-hand turn, you have the right of way going south. So making a lane for that doesn't give you as much of a benefit as making a left-hand turn lane going north.
You know what I think it might have, um, been, uh, addressing is, uh, if you think about the society road intersection, where there they did make a left and a right turn lane, because to make the right turn, people were pulling up into the, um, breakdown lane, uh, taking their right of way when those in the lane were also turning right. So was the, so the 2009 recommendation was to make these two intersections look more like society roads.
Okay.
Yes.
I.
I don't know that it's necessary. I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yeah, trying to understand what the intent originally. I get it. Um. This one, I'm okay either way. I don't. I'd be okay without this one. I think I might have messed up the formatting here. I'm gonna have to go back. Uh, so that one. Yeah, that's this one.
If they put the turn, the left-hand turn lane in there, I think they could increase the, the signaling, right? Could be sped up.
And maybe, and maybe, I don't know if they're synchronized or not. Maybe these two lights get synchronized.
I, I think they are.
Are they?
Um, I'm, I'm not certain, but.
And then the other side of my brain is like, well, do we really want people going that fast down this road? I don't know. I, this one, I, I feel like we could even skip this. Honestly, I don't know. I, I left it in here and changed it just a little bit.
It, it's been, the recommendation's been there since 1999.
Yep.
And they addressed Roxbury a bit via lights, not lanes. They installed that green arrow going northbound for a left.
So maybe that's a better solution. Um, but I don't know. Nothing's been done for 20 years.
Yeah. I feel like, I feel like that's small potatoes compared with some of this other stuff that we're gonna get.
Agreed.
I mean, me actually, I feel like we could push that down below, cause I, I, you know, push it down to, you know, number 10 or whatever. Uh, okay, so number six, provide a center lane on Route 161 between Industrial Park Road and Route 1. That kind of.
That, that. I think, I think some of this will be addressed with the 161. One sixty one widening and the bridge abutments uh because their study goes all the way down to Industrial Park Road and most of that will be. Somewhat widened, I think, uh. A little bit of it closer to the four corners, but it it will taper back down and. It's not gonna get.
We can, we can leave this or ta- or or take it out.
I, it might be worth, because I I think. I think there might have been some recommendations from some of Rosemary's students, uh but I do know that Peter Menudie had recommendations in. The last P O C D about this corridor and improving it aesthetically. You know, how does that relate to transportation? It it, you know, it had some traffic calming effect. By creating a vegetative buffer along the roadside, right, between sidewalk and and addressing that big slope. In front of uh Kitty Campus.
You know, this is that this whole area right here to me sounds like it needs some um arts.
I think, uh why don't I take a look at it tomorrow, Kirk, and I'll I'll see if I can't pull pieces from the love study. And those recommendations along.
Some nice street lamps, maybe an archway that says welcome to East Lime, or I don't know, something.
There there's also the opportunity for arts and culture there and. I did hear Wendy say um that I I don't know if it was state projects, they have to add a one percent to the budget, right, to. So I mean, that's not a bad idea, even if.
I like that a lot.
Do that with our town projects. If we go out for a grant, why don't we just, it's part of the grant budget, arts and culture into it, right? And you one percent of the whatever you were thinking. See some.
I'm gonna put that in here. Well, you already have a different version of this document that you're that you're editing, right? Can you put that, can you?
Well, I'll I'll go into this one, Kirk, and I'll just, I'll start using this one.
Okay. I my my thought is a recommendation that says. Include one percent of the total budget for arts and. Culture or arts and aesthetic, you know, something related to the arts.
In the town roads.
Yeah, make a recommendation that says one percent go towards beautification and arts or something. I don't know. But I I feel like that should be a recommendation in here.
I like the idea is if is if, you know, the town's doing these road projects and we budget one percent.
I think it should go in here for sure. You want me to add it?
I feel like we have to speak to it differently on state roads because we don't. Control those budgets, but yes, I think it should be in here.
So.
You know what else? Under town roads, um as you're heading back up to that that I wasn't thinking of before. Um. Uh I was reading somewhere online today about um. You know that um. The rotary by where U B S was and A B C gymnastics in the middle school. They've allowed that uh center area to grow up into kind of like. Pollinator friendly native plants, probably like some kind of ragweed or golden rod looking thing. Um and Public Works has committed to not mowing it. During peak uh pollinator um. Seasons, but that could be applied to, that's the only example that I know of that in Niantic, but. When we were looking just then at the East Patagansett uh. One sixty one interchange, that used to be a planted interchange as well. That is now just like ugly pavement. And I think that there's some room in this section to talk about um native landscapes. On road sides and in dividers like that.
I'm just gonna put a uh.
So I. I think with that, and this has been an issue that I've seen is with the town is is that. We constantly fight this battle with D P W. They don't want the stuff in the right of way because it's, oh, we gotta, it's an expense. So I think um on that note, I would say maybe it's working with the the recommendation has to, you know, we we. Require the native landscape beautification in conjunction with working with D P W on a. Like a landscape plan for just town, you know, and their roads. You know, if we had some sort of agreement that, hey, you know, you're gonna, I I guess with this intersection at East Pat, knowing the history and what happened there. It and it was just, it's literally, it's a maintenance thing. That's why they got rid of that island. And it. I think it did, you know, it doesn't significantly devalue, but it certainly takes away from the aesthetic um.
I wonder if we can find a case study that's like an adopt an island, adopt a rotary type thing. I'm sure there are private citizens who would be more than happy to take these on as pet projects if asked.
So we recommend like adopt a rotary. In here. I guess is would this transportation section be the place to put something like that?
Adopt a road?
Rotary.
How about even more generally speaking, expand that because like to adopt the road even. You know, you could, you could make it a rotary, you could make it a road, you could make it the that hillside that's right next to. Uh East Patagansett across.
The the East Patagansett uh triangle there. As I recall, it was maintained by the East Lime Beautification Committee. And it was natural, looked nice, but between the snowplows. And cars taking that turn and going right over the. The curb into the landscape. They just gave up and black talked it. So that particular one, you're not gonna get much support for that.
No. I think, I think maybe just as a more general sense. Develop a road beautification something or an adopt a road or that you.
That's what I was kind of getting at, like, and and if we had something like that that I could work with Public Works with. You know, we were, so now we have a an agreement that, hey, we're gonna agree to these. This is the process we'll follow. We won't argue over. Removing landscaping and adding it.
Well, I'm gonna just leave this really rough like this, Gary.
Yeah, that's.
That's the, that's the spirit that uh I think we want to capture and. I'm gonna make these both the same thing. And I'm gonna leave it really badly spelled. So you could find it later. Number six is gonna be that, where we're gonna coordinate. The Public Works, maybe have a a road beautification or adopt the road or something. For beautification in a general sense. That would be a good example there. If people didn't uh run over.
I mean, even in my own neighborhood, we have like the, we don't have an association, but we've all come together and said, let's maintain the cul-de-sac island. Right? So we we contacted, I think someone contacted Joe and said, hey, you mind if we put a couple of benches? And uh one of those book boxes, you know, share a book. So we've done that and the neighborhood gathers out there. Yeah, just about every Friday, so it's kind of cool.
Should get moved to somewhere else too. And I feel like you're, what you were just talking about fits that. Number six, we can move that to wherever. It doesn't fit right here. I don't think exactly. But I like, I like that as a recommendation. Number seven is the same idea about the turn in lane on Route one.
I think I'm good with that. I might just, I might take a look at the state project with like. Abutments and see how that's gonna kind of play into that text.
I almost asked you, I was, I'm, I kept meaning to ask you because I remember seeing that really nice. Plan that was hanging in Town Hall of that, uh but that would be a good thing to put in here, the state plan.
It is to get a copy of that plan that we have hanging on the wall and insert it here.
I think that, I think it's, yeah, I think so. Okay, so this one here, uh. What happened to the recommendation for it? I don't know. I don't know what happened.
Sixty one, keep going.
Yeah, definitely. This is a bad thing. I did put a street view in, so. The picture that you see here, I mean, you guys have all been down this road. You know what, you know what it looks like. I can't even imagine. Somebody on a bicycle coming around this corner, going with the traffic. I just, I don't know how people do it. It is like insane to me that. The road is that close there. So that's one of my recommendations. Uh and I think that that might have been, I don't know if that was in the one before. I think the. Recommendation from before was a blanket statement about one sixty one being widened all the way down.
Smart guys break the law and go on the other side. Both ways.
Yeah, well, I don't blame them here.
Yeah, this is.
I'm gonna retire. You're doing a great job. I'll see you next time.
Listen, before we go, we gotta do, we have to um. Think about it next time because we're scheduled for the twenty seventh, which is number one after our internal deadline of the twenty fourth. And number two, uh Planning Commission public hearing was uh scheduled on that date. We have a week from tomorrow to complete the sections to give us that one week buffer. Before it's got a, the whole thing goes to the Board of Selectmen. So I was going to propose that we schedule a Monday night meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Norm.
See you, see you Monday.
Yes.
And could I get those documents, Gary?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
So uh. Maybe we get a motion to hold a special meeting on the Monday, the twentieth.
Oh, yes, uh can I?
You want it, so moved.
Works, Kirk, give me a second.
Second, Rich, do a second.
That should be fine.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did Norm leave?
Yeah.
He's, but he did say yes.
He did, actually. I heard it.
Well, because our, we just lost our quorum.
Well.
So uh.
Regulations on that at a subcommittee level though, Gary.
Yeah.
I mean, we've been filing an agenda in case we have a planning commission quorum, which we have not.
I think that, you know, the meeting was contin- we could probably continue it it without much ado. I mean, it's not gonna. Make that big of a deal, I don't think. I mean, no one's gonna jump ugly because we continue to discuss the P O C D. It's the the. This meeting is being recorded anyway, so it's gonna be posted online. So all the discussion is is public, available publicly. Um and so the public will see Mr. Peck having left the meeting. Uh and I don't, you know, I think it's, it may be a uh minor infraction in terms of the F O I laws. And you know, I don't, the State Department is gonna come down on us, but.
How would you schedule a special meeting if we had something unexpected come up between regularly scheduled planning meetings? We wouldn't vote on it.
No, you as the chair.
Schedule it.
We just schedule that as the chair with twenty four hour hours in advance notice to publish the the agenda.
So can I do that for our next subcommittee meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're done. Either way, I just like getting the motion.
I agree. I, yes, I'm sorry that I didn't catch that before he.
No worries.
I think it's fine.
Okay, so we probably.
Hurry up.
Well, I'm wondering.
Do you wanna call it?
Well, no, but I think we should.
Ten o'clock.
Given the attendance.
Very well.
Okay.
Why don't we take Rosemary's comment and finish reading from recommendation eight on, and then when we convene, we'll. Discuss, right?
Great.
There's only. There's only a few more.
Just a few.
I totally want to discuss them, Kirk, but I am a little concerned about public perception of the three of us remaining.
There's only eleven left.
Oh, my God. Forget it.
All right, so we will meet with a special meeting or on the twentieth and.
I'll leave that for your uh reading enjoyment then.
Yes, so I'll be working on these documents. I'll probably be talking to both you tomorrow.
Yeah, we should, we should, uh Michelle, you said that you were thinking about a to do list.
Yeah.
Other than.
I've got some time with Gary and Jen tomorrow to go through exactly that.
I I can do some, I can do something. Uh whatever you guys want me to do, I'll try to do it. So I'll volunteer for the yet to be named task.
Well, you're gonna call Julie Wilson too, right?
Uh. I was gonna do that, yeah.
Yeah, Gary should.
Okay. Well, I'll dole out your assignment tomorrow, Kirk.
Please be nice.
Give me the motion to adjourn.
Uh so moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Meeting your Monday will be seven o'clock or six?
You had asked me that question earlier, Michelle, um. Some people wanted seven, some people wanted six.
We need the time, honestly. I mean, this is where I understand that it's inconvenient, but um.
I think it has to be six.
I don't see a way around six o'clock.
Right, six P M is. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Goodbye. How does this thing turn off?
You just hit leave meeting. How did you think that went?
I think it was good.
Good, alright. Yeah, it was pretty productive. Yeah, I think basically what we really, to make the meetings more efficient, if everybody just read everything ahead of time and just says this, you know, and like. Rosemary said, we just discussed what we disagree with. But I think Michelle was was correct to adjourn when she did.
Yeah.
Because we had Doug on.
Yeah.
The other thing I gotta find out from her is the minutes from the last meeting that I didn't attend. Take any notes so I can file them because he wants those minutes.
Can watch the video.
That's what I said.
There's no minute, tell him, tell him to watch the video. That's what the video is for.
Good idea.
Yeah, it's easy. Have a good one, Gary. I'll, call me tomorrow, whatever. You need something, you want, uh whatever. I mean, I'm serious. I can help a little bit more or do whatever.
Okay, um. Yeah, if if things kind of pop up, uh I mean, unless you, if you want to call Julie, that's one less thing I have to do, but I certainly. Have an in there, I think.
I think you, yeah, I don't know.
I have a good rapport with her.
I think you, yeah, I think you you you're the great person for that. I'm not to say that I don't want to do it. I just feel like you said.
I'll get.
Have a good rapport going already. If you don't mind.
Yeah, I could probably get the answers by the end of the day.
Yes, sign me up for something else.
The. I guess the 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 natural resource stuff, the open space stuff that I'm working on with Rosemary, not a whole lot there. It's relatively easy. I mean, it, you could go all, you really just gotta cut and paste the the existing stuff and put it in a Word doc, a Google doc, so we can format it. Um run through it. I mean, there's been a few parcels that. That we've acquired. This is, this is my my conundrum is I've got the table that we created part of the open space plan. But we've acquired some of those parcels, so they really come off the table. So in terms of the P O C D, we haven't updated that plan, so it's kind of like, you know, by by putting the a different table in there. I mean, isn't hurting anything per se, but it's not reflective of the existing plan that has not been yet been updated. So I'm not sure, you know.
I say we put a stake in it and refer to that plan. To say. Uh when that plan is completed.
Yeah, I mean, so in in that case, I mean, my feeling is you don't even change the section. There's nothing wrong with the section. It says, follow the open space plan, follow the the open space plan and the love study if you don't acquire the land.
I think, I think maybe reference the fact that that study is pending, the new one, right?
Yeah, we, you know, I, yeah, we just say, hey, the the Natural Resources Commission, I can do that.
Alright, that's easy for me.
Enough, uh. You know, I, I went through and all my tabs and I actually started looking, they were really I mean, tabs. I, I mean, there were just a couple of things, like I, I point out, uh, like recommendation 13 and, and natural resources. I wrote awkward, the town should enjoy, endorse the Niantic Bay overlook and fishing pier as a recreational for the East Lime. Yeah. That will significantly add to the recreational and open space opportunities for residents and visitors. No shit. But um, don't we already do that? Like, it's just, it doesn't, I don't know. It's like, I cut that out.
I'll have a read, I'll have a read. What, which one is that? That's the.
Chapter five, it's the natural resources and open space.
Alright, I'll have a read through there. That's probably I mean, somebody needs to go through all these and read them all and, and like.
That, that's gonna be me. Jen and I are doing that next week.
Okay.
She's gonna.
One of the things that I recommended to Michelle and I, I mean, she can ask us to do stuff, but one of the things that I told her, I was like, if if everybody pre, pre-formats all of their stuff to some general format and does a once-over on the grammar again and cleans up everything before they send it on to you guys, it would probably help.
There's also, I just wanted to point out, on page 184 of the existing document, within the coastal stuff, there's a whole transportation section about seat, bus, and, um, it's totally in the wrong spot. So I just want you to see that, and then maybe I'm gonna cut it and paste it. Because it's initiate planning for safety and capacity improvements to 156 and Route 161. Look to intermodal means of transportation to minimize the need to widen both state roads, railroad stop, shuttle service, improve seat service.
In the current one or the previous one?
This is in the 2009, right? Yeah.
Oh, well, I don't think that's getting carried forward in that section, is it?
You know, I'm just, it doesn't even belong here. I don't know how it got there. It's like totally out of place.
In the 2009 one.
Right, and I don't know that even, that recommendation is even relevant, because you've, you've kinda got that as we talked, what you just talked about.
Yeah, well, I don't think it's in the exist, in the.